Can we have her on the other screen because I can't see. Order? And I will wait. You all know how I operate. Hello, I am Marsha Herbert, President of the Board of Education. I would like to welcome you to the March 13th, 2024 Board Meeting. In keeping with the Board's commitment to open communication with the community, this meeting is being streamed live on CCPS website at www.carrollk12.org and broadcast live on Channel 21. We are also recording this meeting so that it can be accessed on demand on our website and broadcast throughout the month on Channel 21. Public participation will be held at approximately 5:15. Speakers will be directed into the boardroom from the building lobby and are allotted three minutes to address the Board. As a reminder, please silence all cell phones and other devices. Board members, please turn off your microphones when you're not speaking. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance followed by a moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. At this time, I need a motion for the approval of the agenda.
So moved.
So moved by Dr. Dorsey and seconded by Ms. Pataglia. Comments, questions, corrections? I call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it passes unanimously. Approval of minutes. I need a motion for the unapproved Board Meeting Minutes on February 14th, 2024.
So moved.
By Ms. Pataglia, seconded by Dr. Dorsey. Thank you. Comments, questions, corrections? I call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it passes unanimously. At this time, we will have the Carroll County Student Government Report. There she is. Good evening.
Good evening.
Welcome.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you for your time. Last week, CCSGA had our Executive Board Meeting where we began planning for our final General Assembly, our April General Assembly. And registration is open, so if any students are interested in attending, they can sign up with their advisor. Additionally, officer applications are open and are due March 22nd, so you would return those to Ryan Melhorn, our SGA advisor. The positions are President, Vice President, Secretary, and Second Vice President. And then finally, CCSGA traveled today to Annapolis, Maryland, and we discussed a number of bills and issues that mattered to students in Carroll County with our senators, which was a really great experience. So thank you so much to all of the officers and staff members that went out for that. But that's all. Thank you.
Thank you very much. At this time, we will begin our public comment. Ms. Pataglia.
To have an orally presentation or comments by the public, the following guidelines apply. Speakers with a connection to CCPS will be allowed to address the Board for the allowed three minutes. Only those speakers that have registered online and have been notified by the Communications Department will be permitted to speak. Priority will be given to those citizens that are addressing the Board about an item on the current agenda. Citizens not appearing in person for public comment can write to the Board through email or US mail. Public participation is not intended to be a question and answer session. However, if citizens have specific questions, the superintendent will assign a staff member to make contact during the Board Meeting to arrange a time to respond to questions. The superintendent and the Board reserve the right to correct misinformation presented as factual after the conclusion of the public participation period. Statements to the Board should relate to a recent agenda item, an agenda item that is expected to appear in the future, or a matter of general policy over which the Board has authority. Personnel matters, pending appeals, the actions or statements of individual staff, or items related to employee negotiations are not appropriate topics and may not be discussed. The Board has scheduled time on the agenda for public participation at approximately 5:15 PM. The Board reserves the right to limit the number of speakers on a particular topic so that all topics may be addressed. Additionally, the Board retains the discretion to allow additional speakers as it deems appropriate. The Board is allowing no more than an hour for public participation. Comments are limited to three minutes or less. All comments should be directed to the Board members at the dais. Citizens may only address the Board with their individual comments. Citizens may not stand in for another person or group and read their comments. When the allowed time expires, the speaker is permitted to complete a sentence. Citizens may leave any handouts for Board members on the table at the back of the boardroom. Please do not approach the dais. Additionally, the public may not display signs or posters during the Board Meeting. In lieu of signs, or if you are unable to complete your comments in the allowed time, individuals are encouraged to submit remarks to the Board in writing. Those seated in the audience are asked to be respectful of the speaker and refrain from commenting to the speaker or to the Board members. Our first speaker this evening is Jordan McCollin. And if I mispronounce your name, please correct me.
Hello. My name is Jordan. I am a mother of five children in the Carroll County Public School System, and I came today to talk about a very serious and dangerous, dangerous situation that is happening at Manchester Elementary in my pre-K daughter's classroom. My daughter has been attacked a half dozen times by another peer in the classroom, and I'm not talking about pinching and shoving and even slapping and biting. That's normal at a five-year-old age. My daughter has been maliciously attacked. She has had her hair ripped out. She has had her chest, she's been forcefully kicked in the chest. She's had her hands stomped on. She has been punched in the back of the head. She's been ripped back by the back of her hair, and her eyes scratched in an attempt to have her eyes gouged out. And these are only just a few of the around 50 attacks that have happened amongst other classmates in the classroom. And I'm here because I've emailed all of you personally. I've emailed every person that I can think of to try to get this issue taken care of because the attacks are still happening today. You know, there's a law in place that protects kids between the ages of pre-K and second grade that they cannot be suspended or expelled from school. And at the end of the day, what needs to happen to our kids before this kid's removed? You know, all it takes is for a child to hit another child, for them to fall and crack their head, and now they're dead on the sidewalk. You know, I'm talking about five-year-olds here, but it doesn't take much. And, you know, I haven't been given a clear answer from anybody what it will take before something is truly done. Because adding staff to a classroom that are wearing things to protect themselves to try to control this child, and removing the child for hours at a time in a suspension room, is not a way of dealing with this type of behavior. You're essentially running a pre-K classroom like a prison. Our children are witness, not only witness to these attacks and this behavior, but they are victims of it. The teachers have been victims of it. The administrators have been victims of it. And I just, I'm at a point where I feel like as many people as possible need to hear the truth about what's truly going on in these classrooms because people are forced to hold their tongue and not say anything. And at the end of the day, it's our teachers' jobs and our administrators' jobs to keep our kids safe in the classroom. You know, I'm a stay-at-home mom. I've raised all my kids up until they went into these schools. And I have a child who's going to be 14 years old, so she's been in Carroll County Public Schools for quite some time. I've never had an issue like this. So I believe that it needs to be taken care of immediately. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Kimberly Johnson.
My name is Kim Johnson, and I've been an educator for 19 years, 11 of which I've served as a high school librarian in Carroll County Public Schools. For librarians in our county, this school year ushered in vast changes to our programs. Those of us in this room are certainly familiar with these changes, which included community groups concerted efforts to challenge approximately 60 books in four months. That's more books than was challenged in CCPS between 1991 and 2022, a 31-year time period. We experienced an abrupt change in county leadership for school librarians, the creation of Appendix J, the creation of a parent permission shelf in high school libraries, and a new definition and policy for sexually explicit content. Recently, I began to reflect if these changes truly represented the wishes of my school community or were simply the agenda of a narrowly focused community group. So I started looking at data from our high school libraries. I looked at the circulation figures from the fall semester of 2022 and the fall semester of 2023. 2022 is a good example of the control year. The dust of the pandemic had settled, and things appeared to be returning to homeostasis. By contrast, the fall semester of 2023 was one of rapid change and confusion in libraries. However, you'd never know it from looking at the data. In the fall of 2022, high school librarians circulated 9,404 books to their students. In the fall of 2023, high school librarians circulated 9,229 books to their students, a difference of 175 books. To put this in other words, a 1.8% difference in circulation. Using enrollment data from September, CCPS educates 7,864 high school students. High school librarians circulated 1,365 more books than we have students in just the fall semester alone. I am proud to say we know and seek to serve our many voracious readers in our high schools. In addition to a nearly similar rate of circulation, every high school librarian reported that they had received no parent calls, conferences, or emails regarding the books in our library collections in the fall semester of 2023. Prior to 2022, I've had several conferences or exchanges with parents who are either interested or concerned with what their child is reading. In these instances, I'm always happy to work with parents to devise a plan or guidelines to govern how their child uses the school library. The stable rate of circulation and the general quiet in communicating directly with CCPS high school librarians shows me that students and parents trust their school libraries. So how can we move forward with this trust in mind? I have a few suggestions. First, Appendix J must be reconsidered. Appendix J is time-consuming and restrictive. Most significantly, it will impact the number of new books available to our readers. School librarians, despite our degrees and credentials, were not consulted on either draft of the appendix. Second, the position of school library supervisor must be filled by a candidate with a degree and experience in school librarianship. We would expect nothing less from the supervisor of any other content area in CCPS. Third, April is National School Library Month. This would be a wonderful time for Board members, Superintendent McCabe, or CCPS directors to schedule a visit to a school library in the county. We would be proud to show you our dynamic and student-centered programs, and would be happy to speak further about the impact of new policies and procedures on our libraries. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Kit Hart.
Good evening. I'd like to start by commending each of the Board members for being courageous leaders in the state of Maryland. Time and again, the state has attempted to appease upon your authority. You have remained steadfast in your dedication to the parents and students of Carroll County. I know you don't hear it enough, but thank you. For years now, we have been hearing from parents and teachers alike about the challenges and problems caused by students' access to and use of cell phones while in school. The research is clear that cell phones impede learning, stunt relationships, and lessen belonging. Since 2010, when smartphones started to become ubiquitous, academic standards and outcomes have decreased, while simultaneously bullying, unruly classrooms, and teenage suicide rates have increased. Of course, those facts cannot all be attributed to cell phones in schools, but it's difficult to argue that that hasn't been a contributing factor. AP News reported recently that high school teachers complained about students using Netflix on their phones during class. Around the country, educators say students routinely send Snapchat messages in class, shop online, and listen to music. Here in Maryland, a chemistry teacher says students use gambling apps to place bets during the school day. How can academic rigor and achievement be attained when kids are bombarded by messages from friends and online entertainment? And even beyond academics, is it any wonder that 10% of children have a diagnosed anxiety disorder in America when their phones are distracting them all day long? This is such common sense that most parents and teachers will agree that restricting cell phones while at school is necessary. The problem is enforcing the policy. Australia and New Zealand, along with several other districts around the country, around the United States, have successfully implemented a ban, and students turn their cell phones into yonder pouches at the start of the day. These can be purchased for every homeroom in the school for which cell phones can be deposited. Imagine the real social interactions that will be made in the hallways, the cafeteria bustling with adolescent conversations, and the focus back on academics in the classroom. The last thing I'll say is a word of encouragement to parents. If you are considering holding out on smartphones in an effort to embrace childhood, know that you are not alone. I have two middle-school-age students who will not be given cell phones until they can drive. I encourage you to join the Facebook group called Wait Until Eighth. With over 120,000 followers, this page provides resources and advice to parents who have pledged to give their kids childhoods free from the pressure of social media until eighth grade, ideally. I hope many more parents will join me. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is John Carver.
Good evening. Thanks for enabling me to share some thoughts here this evening. I'm a dad to six adopted kids from overseas and granddad to four kids. Starting at the end of last year through the beginning of this year, my grandson, who is a student in the pre-K class in Manchester Elementary, has been attacked, up to that time, six times by the same student that was referred to earlier. So I decided to have a meeting with the people in charge of the school and the mom of this student. And during our conversation, mom referred to her attacking student as an alpha, A-L-P-H-A, alpha. So I was taken aback by that description of this child, and it was kind of alluded to the fact that this is how she is and this is how this child behaves. So I left the meeting after about an hour or so with a little bit of hope that things were going to improve. Well, less than a week after that, my grandson was attacked again. These attacks have impacted our family in a big way. A member of my family, an adult now, was attacked by a few adults over the years, very, very, in a very dangerous way, black and blue bruises and cuts and marks and things like that. So when my grandson is attacked, it hits really close to home. I've lost a daughter who died. So these issues are very close to me because, you know, I can forecast that if this child continues to attack kids and/or adults later in life, people are going to die. It's just a matter of time. So I decided to find out if there's other families that have been impacted by this same student online. So I was able to communicate and have been communicating with other households that have been attacked by the same student. None of these attacks have been prompted by the students who've been attacked. They've just been out of the blue attacking these kids in a variety of ways. This is obviously a dangerous event, running out of time quickly. There's psychological damage that's being done to these kids who are being attacked. Some of these kids don't want to go to school anymore because of this one student. It's a matter of time before any student in this class or other classes, as this child grows older, are going to be attacked in a more violent way, a knife, whatever, that's going to end up these kids getting hurt bad. People like this child are going to grow up to be violent people. We've seen them, excuse me, we've seen them on the news multiple times. In addition, kids who have been attacked across the United States end up killing themselves at times. I don't want this to happen to any kid in this county ever. So something's got to be done quickly because too many of these kids are getting hurt consistently. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Gary Foote.
Good evening, Board Members. Please come to Read Across America, March 23rd at the Tech Center. I know you will receive invitations from other speakers tonight, but I hope that you will come and enjoy the event. Yes, our younger students will have a great time, but at the same time, I think we need to acknowledge something else that is happening, not just in Carroll County, but all around the state and all around the country. Literacy skills are plummeting. Our best students struggle with stamina, basic comprehension, and even extracting the simplest meaning from text. One professor at college notes that it wasn't long ago he assigned 30 pages of reading per class, and students did it without question. Now they can barely manage 10. And they complain bitterly. Higher-level class discussion, more focus on applications and consequences, that's hard to do when class time has to be spent predominantly rehashing the plot. Our students are no longer reading, they're scrolling. They aren't writing, they're texting. We wonder why? Because we have lowered standards. We no longer assign homework. We don't teach grammar, spelling, punctuation. We insist that there be no zeros in any gradebook, and many classes don't even assign a textbook. We have speakers here tonight talking about cell phones. Other speakers are discussing library policies. It all fits together. Are these part of the problem? Of course they are. But there is more, and let's be serious. COVID was so four years ago. It's time to stop using that excuse and figure out what to do to fix it. I'll bet you've heard lots of this before. We know exactly what to do. We just don't seem to want to do it. But it gets worse. Our students don't even know how badly they're doing. Last fall across the country, 62% of high school students enrolled in post-secondary study after graduation. 80% of those students said they were ready for the work, but only 20% of graduating seniors actually had credentials that indicated they had achieved college readiness benchmarks. 42% of incoming freshmen needed to take remedial English and reading. 65% of those students also took remedial classes in math, but that's a problem for another day. Even though achievement is seriously falling short, grades have never been higher. 89% of students across the country received all grades of either A or B in their major subjects. That can't possibly reflect real learning. There is only one way to get smarter. Ultimately, you need to read. That has been the truth since the invention of the printing press. It's too bad we no longer wish to teach that fact to our students.
Thank you. Next speaker is Andrew Millam.
Thanks for having me today. I'll start off by saying that I've always been a proponent for this school system. Not only have I been a proponent verbally, but I've made monetary contributions as well. Back in 2020, a group of myself and six other business owner friends that I have contributed $7,200 to the school system to eradicate the lunch debt accumulated by the children. 6,000 of them went to eradicate it, 1,200 went to a safety net account for if it were to happen again. So I've literally put my money where my mouth is. So I'll keep this quick. I'm touching on another issue or an issue that has already been touched on at Manchester Elementary within the pre-K class. Obviously, there are kids that are getting hurt. My daughter is one of them. There's been a lot of people putting their hands up in the air about this issue. If there's nothing we can do, we're sorry. I don't find that acceptable. When kids are getting hurt, something needs to be done at some level, and that does not seem to be the case because these attacks continue. These issues have affected us not only as parents, but it's affected our kids as well. My child that attends that class has now regressed in potty training, which according to a psychologist, has been typical, like a traumatic response of regression. She's urinated at school every day for three weeks now. That hasn't happened since she was potty trained at two and a half. These things are affecting her, and they're affecting us. You know, with this issue, especially troubling, that the attacking child's mother works at the school. It seems to be quite a conflict of interest there, and, you know, we don't know what to think. We really just would urge you guys to please do everything in your power to help protect the majority instead of the minority here. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Marie Dubin.
Good evening, Board Member Superintendent McCabe. I'm speaking tonight on the issue of the presentation and discussion you'll be having about the personal device policy. And while I do favor a more restrictive policy, practices are more what's being addressed, as I can tell in the presentation today. So I would like to address my comments to some of what's coming up there. If you do decide to adjust the policy, and that comes before the public later, then I may have some more to share later at that time. So a communication campaign around the topic was mentioned, and I think this is a fantastic idea. And the slideshow represents expectations, but I think this is a great opportunity to expand the scope of that communication campaign, to address digital safety and citizenship as well. This is an opportunity to make a more expansive positive impact that can also directly relate to the well-being of students. I would love to see educators, especially at the middle school, consider as part of this education and the way that they enforce practices and policies, to really positively motivate students around the general themes of that citizenship and the behavior, possibly coming up with individual and group incentives around being able to fully comply with the requirements at that age. And there may even be rewards around device-free days and other things. I know that that's done at the elementary school, a lot related to behavior, but I think there's an opportunity around the device issue as well. At the same time, this does not go far enough to support the professionals in the classroom. Having a device at school needs to Having a device at school needs to be viewed as a privilege that a student or family can lose. A three-strikes-and-you're-out-type paradigm or something else to make it very clear that losing the privilege is definitely something that can happen. And educators need to be able to set some of those standards and policies and be able to enforce them with the backup of administration as well. And if cellphone parking lots are not illegal or explicitly against another policy, I absolutely believe that should be a tool that teachers have at their disposal. Especially at the high school level, I would like to note that I think that involving the student voice would be a good idea. The presentation slides mention reaching out to parents for some feedback, and I definitely think, at least at the high school level, involving students in that is really important, too. They are key stakeholders in all of this, and it's always easier to get buy-in when stakeholders have the opportunity to be heard and to be part of the solution as well. I'll just mention and call your attention, The New York Times had an article back in November where they polled several high school students in several parts of the country to say, "What are students saying about school cellphone bans?" And their positions run the gamut. Students that believe they absolutely should be banned, students that think nothing should change, but lots of really great thought in between. So if you do include the students in the solution, I think that it's going to stick a lot better. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Andrew Waldman.
Hello there. Thank you for the opportunity to present my no cellphone usage in words between classes policy seems appropriate. I am Andrew Waldman. I live in Westminster, and I have family in the public school system. I'm also a Democrat, Democratic candidate for the U.S. Senate, and this is a very brief version of my published policy. Purpose to significantly and immediately reduce the negative impacts of cellphone usage on the public school system. Note that many other nations have already begun to do this. Benefits to be realized this year, confronting students near addiction to their cell phones, actually removing their phones from them several hours, five days a week maybe. Reduce distractions in class, no more checking every time their phone beeps. Bullying messages sent and received, drug transactions mainly in high schools. Given schools' academic performance ratings will be improved, I'm not questioning, and attendance could be, attendance problems could be reduced also. So from policy is very simple. All cell phones will be placed in loggers before the class starts for the day. They will only be able to access their phones at lunchtime and then put them away. Pretty clean. Students found violating the policy will lose their phones immediately, and it will be returned to their parent when they pick them up that day. Believe me, that goes over really well. Okay? Multiple violations could cost the students their cellphone privileges. This is straightforward and simple, and it'll positively affect Maryland's 900,000 school students and this nation's 49.9 million public school students. The only pushback on this that Commissioner Superintendent McCabe would know, they're going to get the call from this parent saying, "What do I do if there's a crisis at the school?" Everybody's concerned about that. And the simple answer to that is you will not be able to communicate with your students as you can now because something has to change. However, every teacher will have a cellphone with them at all times. So there it is, prudent and practical. Teachers, principals, superintendents could have this working in a matter of weeks, and I don't see any budget efforts, any budget impacts. If this is done now, we could see improved academic performance in the fourth semester of this certain year. I recently sent a copy, a full copy of this report to all 23 superintendents and their counterpart in Baltimore City. Okay? I have a full write-up on, you'll love this, wildmanforussenate.com. Okay? And then page down and you'll find it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Ryan Zawowski.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing me to speak at this public discussion. I believe that this is something that's needed more now than ever before. As you know, my name's Ryan Zawowski. I'm a current resident of Carroll County Public, or Carroll County, and have children in Carroll County Public Schools. I've been a resident of Carroll County for 31 years. I'm an Eagle Scout, a soccer coach for a local rec council where I coached two age groups, and a parent of two elementary school students. I love my kids, and I'm here to be a voice for them, as well as other students that have experienced these issues in the past. We collectively as a community have an obligation to educate and protect the future generation of this country. We pay taxes to the government to provide quality education in a safe environment. As a parent with kids currently in the school system, I have to hold the school system accountable for upholding their end of the deal. I realize that some of these rules that are put in place by legislation down in Annapolis and DC undermine the quality education and the safety of our students. This doesn't mean that we should stand idle. I have multiple occurrences that I've been witness to and heard from other parents this school year alone with my child, being the receiving end of bullying and unacceptable behavior by fellow students in their classes. These actions include unprovoked blindside attacks, unprovoked hitting, kids licking their hands and wiping it on my children's faces, thinking that it's funny. I've never been made aware of this stuff. When it happened, it was several days after the fact. I actually had to talk to the head of the elementary schools in order to get the principal to reach out to me. This happened four days after the incident happened. Neither the teacher, the support person, or the school administration have been able to apply any real consequences to the student for these actions. This student has had multiple offenses. Basically, I deem this completely unacceptable as a parent, as I feel like you should as well. Any of these things that my children have had to deal with, if they were adults, would have possibly resulted in them being arrested and put in jail. It's considered assault. Why do we allow children to continue with bad behavior with zero consequences? Why do school administrators, teachers, and sometimes Board of Ed members have their hands tied? Is it purely a funding issue that comes into play if only these policies are implemented? We are allowing children to see that there's no consequences, minimal consequences at all for serious actions. This does not harbor good behavior for the rest of their childhood and into their adult life. Correcting bad behavior at a young age is crucial. As a soccer coach, I've got to deal with it, especially after school. Run laps. You don't want to, you don't want to listen to what I have to do? Run laps, and it's not just the team, it's the entire class. Basically, I think it's your job as the Board of Education to act in the best interests of these future generations. I urge you to push back against the state and against federal policy and basically advocate for our children. It's not fair that they have to deal with getting beat up in class for no reason. I demand better. Obviously, we demand better. Now it's time for you guys to do better and advocate for that. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Greg Malvo.
Thank you, board members, for this opportunity to speak. I'm Dr. Greg Malvo, proud father of a student in our Carroll County Public School System, PhD in Higher Education Administration, I teach Writing and Literature, and a candidate for the Board of Education. What is the inspiration for today's talk? Today, I would like to talk about some of our school's unsung heroes, whose role in our schools is powerful. They are key players in keeping Carroll County schools the top in the state. They are our school support staff, often referred to as educational support professionals or ESPs. These are special education assistants, student support assistants, cafeteria staff, speech therapists, school psychologists, instructional assistants, teachers aides, and more. I've spoken with various ESPs and just last week connected with many teachers aides at an event where they shared their concerns with me. You all inspired today's talk, and you are heard. Educational support professionals are essential. I want to ensure that they are properly compensated for their incredible efforts. They're a big reason why Carroll County schools remain at the top, and I'm very concerned about the shortage of ESP staff members in our schools. Many who join ESP workforce do not stay long. A fair wage and strong benefits will retain these professionals and help our students to thrive. The Maryland Blueprint specifically helps fill the pay gap for classroom teachers. However, ESPs were left behind. I think the ESP Bill of Rights has some good points, including a career ladder, more safe and healthy work environment, and job security. These benefits can help to attract talent to our kids that they need and deserve. We've already seen the strong relationship between our current board and employee work groups. They've created three-year contracts with most of our employees. For example, one group, the Custodian Maintenance and Transportation Unit, our bus drivers, were able to negotiate improved leave, benefits, flexible spending accounts, and more. Another group, food service workers, successfully negotiated for an improved work schedule, leave, vacation, overtime, and more. If elected to the board, I'd make sure we take care of our employees, and when we have contracts, bargain in good faith with employer groups. I would work with local officials. And in closing, I'll reiterate that we should live within our budget and live within our means, and yet everyone needs to be considered and all sides need to be heard. It is in the best interest of our kids and teachers and to retain the best talent for our schools to be successful in this. A proper duty of care for our ESP staff is something that the entire community can agree upon, and I really hope it gets done. Thank you.
Thank you. And our last speaker for this evening is Kathleen Casper.
Good evening, board members. Superintendent McCabe, Assistant Shafni. My name is Kathleen Casper. I am the media specialist from Friendship Valley Elementary School. First, I would like you to know that even in the midst of the media coverage of school libraries this year, I love my job. If you were to ask the students that are at FVE, my hope is that they would tell you, "I love working with them each and every day." I tell you this because they are the reason I am standing here before you. The most important part of my job is the interactions and support I give the students so that they can become successful students. Recently, I saw the posting for the supervisor of library media for Carroll County. I am excited and nervous to know who will be our new leader. I am here to request that when you are interviewing for this position, you take into consideration a few things. We need a leader who has a strong library background. Our job is not like any other job in the building. I support students, teachers, administrators with technical needs. I am the one the PTO looks for when they are looking to hold assembly. I teach classes and write lesson plans to help students research, be safe on the Internet, find the literature they want to read, and much more. I help new readers find books to practice and support the sight words they are learning in class. I organize book fairs, Battle the Books, and One Book, One School events. I keep track of the technology in the building. I am the first offense before technology services. We are a team. I do my best to support our technology service technician in our building. My library space is a meeting area for visitors needing to collaborate, interventionist, helping struggling students, colleagues needing an area to test their students, or collaboratively plan. Our door is always open, and we do whatever is needed to support the students that we serve. Each day is different. I never know who is going to come needing my support or the time they will show up. All I can say is that when they enter that door, I will smile and I would do my best to fix whatever issue they have so that learning and instruction can continue. The library supervisor needs to understand what we go through each day. They need to understand the issues that demands and that are put on us. They need to walk in our shoes. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Amelie, in the light of some of the conversations that happened here this evening, can you bring some awareness and some education to the public regarding what some of the laws are regarding students and the situations in that matter that we're dealing with?
I can certainly discuss in a general way some of the laws that affect students generally. I don't want to discuss specific laws that may be particular to a specific situation. So, but let me run down several of them. First, we have Maryland statutes, Section 7-305 of the Education Article of the Annotated Code of Maryland, which deals generally with suspensions and expulsions of students. I don't know what that is. We also have a fairly recent amendment. It is Section 7-305.1 of the Education Article of the Annotated Code of Maryland, which was enacted by the General Assembly in 2017. And Section 7... I don't know why it's doing that.
So 7-305.1 is the law that the General Assembly enacted, which makes it next to impossible to suspend or expel a student in pre-K kindergarten first and second grade, and severely limits those possibilities that existed prior to 2017. Prior to 2017, students in that grade bracket were subject to the same law that applied to all students through grade 12. And so we've got that one provision. Let me add also that in addition to the statutes, we have regulations that were promulgated by the Maryland State Board of Education in 2014, found in COMAR 13A, 08, 01 et cetera, which drastically limit the ability to remove a student from a class for more than 10 days unless there is a showing that the student poses an imminent threat or that the student is a chronic disruption. And in any of those situations involving students in regular education, there is a suspension by a principal, subject to a removal conference by the superintendent or the superintendent's designee to determine whether or not the student is able to be removed beyond 10 days. In order to remove beyond 10 days, you need to show that imminent threat or chronic disruption, and then the student is put in an alternative program and returned. So that applies generally. On top of that, we've got provisions in federal law that deal with children with disabilities under the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act. And under IDEA, when a student is identified, and again, I'm not discussing any particular student, you cannot change a student's placement, that's any removal beyond 10 days, without a functional behavioral assessment, a behavior intervention plan, and then a manifestation determination determining that the student's behavior is not a manifestation of the child's disability. If, in fact, it is determined that the child's behavior is a manifestation of the child's disability, you cannot remove that child from that child's placement through the suspension process unless, unless the parent agrees, or you go to a special education due process hearing at the Maryland Office of Administrative Hearings and have a trial-like procedure before an administrative law judge who orders and approves the change of placement to a different school setting or maybe even to a non-public program. And it is quite an involved process. It just takes a tremendous amount of time. Not saying that it's not a process that we don't follow, but what I'm saying is it doesn't happen in a period of weeks or even a period of months because it just takes that amount of time. of time. In addition, when a parent contests the change of placement, they invoke what we call stay put, and under stay put, the child gets to remain in the last agreed-upon or approved placement subject to judicial intervention. I wish it was easier. In addition to IDEA, we also have Section 504 of the Rehabilitation Act of 1973, which also provides protections for individuals with disabilities. Frankly, our legislative bodies and the Maryland State Board of Education has not made the process easier. The emphasis is on restorative practices. Restorative practices are interventions that are supposed to be provided in a school setting. There's a menu of restorative practices. I'm not the best person to speak to that. Mr. Streger or Mr. Shockney could speak to that much better than I. But the restorative practices are designed to provide interventions. In order to do it properly, the way it's envisioned, it requires more staff than we're able to provide in a lot of our school settings because it requires behavior specialists. It requires more support personnel, as Dr. Malvo mentioned, educational support professionals. It requires more than the classroom teacher can reasonably handle. These are not excuses. These are the realities. And I can tell you that as a parent and as a grandparent, I hear the frustration and I understand the frustration. I'm just saying that it's more to it than removing a child from the school. And again, that is a very general, broad-brush overview of the law that we've had in place. Prior to 2014, we would suspend students for behavior that we wouldn't have the restorative practices. It was not uncommon where we would have students suspended for a month, a semester, or the rest of the year. That doesn't happen anymore in the state of Maryland.
And to add to that and to close out public comment, I'll just add that we are all appreciative for those who came tonight to speak about the situations that are out in our schools. We are aware of those situations. We're working through those with our school staff. And for anyone who is interested, we do have a work session on Monday, March 18th, on student behavior. I would encourage anyone who is having issues out there to either tune into that digitally or you can be in the audience and observe that conversation that takes place between staff and the Board of Education. I think it's going to be a great night of conversation, looking at some challenges that we face and looking at ways to resolve those issues. So, thank you again for everyone who came out to participate this evening.
Thank you, Dr. McCabe. And now, we will move on to employee groups. Just, okay, all right, okay. I didn't know if anybody was leaving or not.
Good evening, Dr. McCabe and members of the Board of Education. I'm Cindy Porter, President of CASE, representing assistants, clericals, and LPNs across Carroll County Public Schools. CASE is very much looking forward to being a part of the upcoming Read Across Maryland event on March 23rd at the Carroll County Career and Technology Center. This is a wonderful opportunity for our students and families to attend an event which encourages such an important life skill. On behalf of our bargaining unit, I also want to express gratitude for the upcoming board work session this coming Monday on student behaviors. Situations like those conveyed in my last two-months remarks are still occurring and creating even more stress for all educators and administrators in our school system. We feel this work session is a positive step to begin to address a situation impacting students and staff alike every day. If you think about it, we're working with an overall educational structure that has been in place for decades. CASE believes that all stakeholders in our school system need to work collaboratively to see what we can creatively do within our current dictated parameters to have a positive impact for all students in our county. As I have said many times before, CASE Bargaining Unit members are at the forefront of many issues impacting the students in Carroll County. We are seeing that it does take a village to provide the best possible outcomes for the students we serve. We talk about addressing the whole child in our educational processes, and CASE is ready to work together with other educators and staff in Carroll County to effect meaningful change so we can change the focus back to learning in our county. Thank you.
Good evening, Superintendent McCabe, Board members. No Commissioner. I'm Celeste Jordan, President of CCEA. I want to thank the members of the Board of Education who met with CCA and CASE educators a few weeks ago. The educators appreciate the chance to have a conversation with you. We appreciate your time and attention. As you know, CCA has heard from an increasing number of our members who have shared all too common disruptive behaviors that have interfered with learning of all students and increased concerns about safety for students and staff alike. We are grateful that the Board of Education has created a work session to address these matters. In the long term, there are systematic issues that boil down to poor communication and unclear expectations. We firmly believe that having clear expectations and a process that will be followed with fidelity and follow-up with the educator is critical to building trust. Most educators would prefer handling the little stuff in their classrooms, but they need to know that we support it by their administration in the event it has to move from a minor to a major. In the short term, educators would greatly appreciate their administrators communicating with them during the discipline process and following up with them, even if the administrator cannot provide details about the student's discipline. Also, in Article 10(c) of the Collective Bargaining Agreement, there is language that establishes a Joint Faculty Administration Committee to establish guidelines how to handle issues at each individual school. While this is contractual for the CCA Bargaining Unit members, we do believe that CASE should be included in that committee's work. CCA recommends that all schools establish this committee before the end of the current school year and begin to work on protocols to be implemented next fall. CCA has planned professional development for September, we couldn't get it in any sooner than that, that we believe will help educators in the classroom with these very issues as well. I was going to hand you a letter with more details about this, but I left that at the office, so I'll email you tomorrow morning about that stuff. But you'll have it for your work session. CCA looks forward to the discussion on portable electronic devices at tonight's meeting. As a classroom teacher, I saw firsthand the distraction of cell phones called in the classroom and in the school. I would like to, about 10 years ago, CCA did a free screening of the documentary Screenagers, which I believe you can get online. I think they've updated even, and that is a very powerful documentary for parents to watch about the addiction to cell phones, not just of our children, but of us as well. Okay, you heard about this already, but on Saturday, March 23rd, we're having Read Across Maryland at the Career Tech Center from 9:00 to noon. CCA, CASE, and CCPS are co-hosting this free event. You get free pancake breakfast if you're a child. We'll feed you if you're an adult, we just ask for donation. Penguin Random House has once again generously donated new books for this event, and each child will be able to take at least one new book home. If you come later, 11:00 to noon, you might get more than one because we're going to, I don't want to bring any back. This event would not be possible without Penguin Random House. I want to quote author Conan Doyle, "It is a great thing to start life with a small number of really good books, which are your very own." So, please mark your calendars, and I hope to see you there on Saturday, March 23rd, from 9:00 to noon. Thank you. Thank you very much. At this time, I would like to have the board members do the recognition statements for the day, the week, or the month. And we're going to start with Ms. Pataglia to my left.
March is Nat...
Let's hold on here first. Whoops, we have some departures.
Yep, I'll wait. March is National Athletic Trainers Month, and we are proud to have Athletico Physical Therapy provide athletic trainers to all of our high schools. Their certified athletic trainers are trained to meet the needs of all athletic departments and services, including injury and illness prevention, wellness promotion, evaluation, assessment, and diagnosis, immediate and emergency care, therapeutic intervention, healthcare administration, and professionally responsibility. Thanks to all those individuals for keeping our athletes healthy and safe.
Thank you. Dr. Dorsey has two?
Yes, thank you. First, Music in Our Schools Month. March also is Music in Our Schools Month, an opportunity for music teachers to bring their programs to the attention of the school and the community, and to display the benefits that school music brings to students of all ages. Our schools are beginning their spring vocal and instrumental concerts, and we encourage members of the community to come out and show their support and enjoy some great music. In addition, we are very proud to have 19 of our students representing our school system in this year's Maryland All-State Ensembles. Also, Youth Art Month. March is Youth Art Month also. This special month encourages support for quality school art programs and provides a special opportunity for us to feature the wonderful artwork created by our very talented students. Artwork by our high school students is being displayed through March 24th in the Lyndon Gallery at Carroll Community College. Elementary and middle school art is on display at the Carroll Arts Center through March 21st.
Thank you. And Mr. Whistler.
Hi. Good evening, everyone. Happy early St. Patrick's Day. I think as a former middle school math teacher, you gave this to me. So, National Middle Level Education Month is also observed in March. It's a time to recognize the importance of providing students in middle grades with the support they need to succeed both academically and personally. The skills, habits, and values established during this time will have lifelong influence that directly impacts a student's chances for a successful and healthy future. Thank you to the administrators, teachers, and staff at our middle schools for all they do for our students.
Thank you. And Mr. Whistler, you may go on with your activities and correspondence.
Sure, okay. So, on February 15th, I attended a luncheon at McDaniel College, sponsored by our Chamber of Commerce. There, business leaders, many of my board colleagues, and school staff received an update on the county budget. On February 19th, I attended the District 5 Carroll County Night in Annapolis, where our delegation outlined the status of numerous bills before the legislature. I am very grateful for their efforts to secure our county's fair share of funding and their efforts to protect our local control of all education issues. On February 21st, I toured the Boys and Girls Clubs of Carroll County's Clubhouse, which is under construction at the former North Carroll High School. Many local businesses and nonprofits are working very hard to breathe life back into that building. The grand opening will occur on April 9th, and I do plan to attend. On February 24th, I attended the History Day Competition at Westminster High School. I learned so much from the students' displays and presentations. I also really appreciated seeing the numerous artifacts and demonstrations sponsored by our farm museums, civic groups, and the historic societies from many of our municipalities. On February 26th, I attended the Superintendent's Town Hall at South Carroll High School. Many thanks to you and those staff members that worked a long day to be there and ensure our parents stay informed about Wade's blueprint will affect our schools over the coming months. On March 4th, I was invited to serve as a judge for the Mount Airy Main Street Business Association's Chili Challenge. While there were many terrific entries from individuals and restaurants, I suggested to Mayor Hushour and the business leaders there that they need to invite our Career and Tech Center culinary students next year. I'm sure our students will win that competition very easily, but I'm a bit biased. And finally, I participated in Maryland Association of Boards of Education's Legislative Committee by weekly meetings. The first one was on February 26th, and then another one on March 11th. We are tracking with due diligence a couple of bills in particular. One is House Bill 785, cross-fired a Senate Bill 738, the Freedom to Read Act. Also tracking with great interest, House Bill 558, which relates to the health education framework. These bills and the content are changing day by day. Yesterday, there were amendments offered that were favorable to our county, and then today, they've been stripped out, and the legislation still looks troubling. But we are still tracking those pieces of legislation, and I urge parents and community groups to get involved. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Dorsey.
Okay, thank you. On February 15th, I also attended the luncheon where the county budget was updated and shared. On the 16th, we had our Equity Council meeting here at Central Office, and this meeting was very well-attended by our council members. Thanks to Mr. Diaz, he shared a wealth of information, including our CCPS recruitment efforts linked to our strategic plan, and he also shared information about the Blueprint for Maryland's Future Act Hiring Practices and Diversity Report. He involved council members in a question-and-answer session, and council members were very engaged in asking pertinent questions about the topic that was being presented. So, our thanks to Mr. Diaz for sharing, and also to Dr. Moore for planning and facilitating the meeting for us. On February 24th, I also attended the History Day Event held at Westminster High School. Students' work was displayed through exhibits, research papers, or websites, and some shared oral presentations on their projects related to the theme Turning Points in History. There was also a gallery of community group displays and talks. So, we thank Ryan Melhorn for coordinating and facilitating the day's events, and we thank all of the students who participated. And thanks and congratulations to those students whose projects won in the various categories. On February 27th, I attended CCEA Night, and I really appreciate sharing open and honest dialogue with members of our CCEA. On March 4th, our Conference Program Committee meeting was held for MABE's Annual Conference, and during our meeting, we continued discussion and prioritization of keynote speakers, hot topics, and workshop topics and speakers for our upcoming MABE Conference. And finally, on March 8th, we had our Curriculum Council meeting. Our first presentation was presented by Mr. Wernick, Laura Dolan, and Ryan Melhorn. They shared an informative presentation on instructional use of AI, artificial intelligence in the classroom. There is a plan for rolling this information out to all stakeholders, including the board members. Content supervisors then shared information about the instructional materials that are under consideration for adoption this year, and time was given for council members to begin reviewing the materials. And there will be more information shared during the discussion part of our agenda tonight. So, again, we thank Mr. Wernick for facilitating our Curriculum Council meeting again.
Thank you, Dr. Dorsey. Ms. Pataglia.
So, many of the events that fellow board members have brought up, we had the county luncheon at McDaniel College District 5 Night in Annapolis. Some of us toured the new Boys and Girls Club at the old North Carroll High School, which is a phenomenal facility. The Town Hall at South Carroll, we have another one coming up. We had the, I joined members of MSDE at the Career and Tech Center, which was a phenomenal morning, and I thoroughly enjoyed having some of the conversations with our state board. Last night, we had our CAC meeting, oh, I'm sorry, Monday night, we had our CAC meeting. And then yesterday was the Drug Expo that they hold annually over at the Ag Center. A great event for our eighth graders to come out to, very informative. I don't think they realize the importance of the education that's there, but I think eventually they do understand because I can tell you, I value what we have down there for the Drug Expo every year. It's incredible. Some upcoming events, we have the LAC meeting tomorrow I have. We have work session coming up. Read Across America, which I'm extremely looking forward to, and I'm dragging my nine-year-old daughter along with me, so she's going to have some fun, I'm going to make her. We have the Town Hall coming up, and Battle of the Books are underway, so we are starting to see some invitations regarding that, so I'm really excited for those coming up. Personally, I ended my college class of Anthropology, Health, Illness, and Wellness with a 99.1%. So, I am super proud of myself. That was not a very easy class. That was a very hard final I had to do, and I love... and I loved it. It was a great class. And I just started Sociology in Families. Yes, we do have bullying going on in the community. We, you know, we heard from many families here. I mostly want to address our parents right now. I want to make sure you are talking to your kids about their apps that they have on their phones. Make sure they are on private. Make sure that no one else can look at your child's stuff. Take things from their pages. Talk to them about accepting friend requests from people they don't know. It's dangerous. It is so dangerous. And just make sure you are talking to your kids about it. You're looking after them. You're making sure they're doing what they should and should not be doing. Just double-check everything, you know? Parents, do not be posting stuff on community pages. It's disgusting. Like, I don't know how many times we have to go through this. We're supposed to be setting examples. Don't be posting pictures of other people's kids. Don't be making comments about other people's kids. Just stop. We need to set an example. We need to do better in this community, and we can't do better and lead by example if other people aren't doing it. So we have got to stop. Everybody work together. Let's do what we can. Today is National K-9 Veterans Day. I didn't even know there was such a day. That is such a cool day. And I'm very thankful for, you know, we have had several K-9s with our various law enforcement departments here in Carroll County, and some of them retire. And some other agencies, they do like little K-9 cards, and I think those are the coolest things ever, that they do, like little training cards. So I just wanted to give a quick acknowledgement for that. So, but everybody, just enjoy spring break. It's coming. It's almost here. We can all take a breather for a couple of days, so just be safe. Thanks.
Thank you. And now we will hear from our student representative. Sahitha, how are you doing?
Good.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. So from February nineteenth to the twenty-third, I served as a student page for the Maryland General Assembly. I assisted delegates during the sessions, and I got the tremendous opportunity to speak to delegates across Maryland and senators, and of course, Carroll County's very own delegates and senators, such as Boucher, Tomlinson, Rose, and Senator Reedy. I was able to enrich myself in the ways of the state government, and I had a fantastic time with the other pages. To future seniors who are interested in this opportunity, reach out to the heads of your social studies department in your school. On February twenty-sixth, I attended the Superintendent's Town Hall. It was an incredible, it was really crucial information on what is going to be happening and what is going to come from the Maryland Blueprint. Earlier today, CCSGA had their advocacy day in Annapolis, in which we were able to speak to Senator Reedy and staffers in the House and get a tour of the beautiful Maryland State House and learn the history of the old Senate and House chambers. On March eighteenth and nineteenth, all high schoolers in Carroll County will be voting for the student representative on the Board of Education-elect and who will sit on this board in the 2025-2026 school year. High schoolers, make sure to watch the candidate's video on CCPS Media on YouTube. Thank you very much.
Thank you. On February fifteenth, the three Mount Airy schools, in collaboration with International Office, hosted a wonderful multicultural event entitled A Night Around the World, which celebrates diversity and global unity. The evening offered a vibrant showcase of cultures from around the globe. Attendees immersed themselves in the rich diversity of world cultures through displays of traditional attire, authentic artifacts, culinary offerings, and musical performances in dance. Thank you. Families, students, teachers, and administrators enjoyed the festivities and departed with a deepened sense of culture and appreciation. Now, I would like to show you a short video.
An Evening Around the World is a multicultural night that started three years ago at MABE, and we decided, you know what, why don't we go ahead and expand it, and let's include our whole community? So that's when we invited cars and also Mount Airy Middle to join us. So it was a kind of cool collaboration of all three schools.
So I'm very proud to see how the schools are collaborating together in this event, and I think it's very important because it shows acceptance of other cultures, which is our main focus. So I'm very happy about that.
Yeah, I agree a hundred percent. I think for the interpreters who spend a lot of time going from school to school and working directly with their families, this gives them the opportunity to bring their cultures into a school setting that is more meant to be fun and enjoyable and welcoming to the whole community.
Tonight, we had a traditional group singing and actually playing instruments from Korea. The one that really shocked me were the ones where the students were by themselves on center stage.
Incredible.
It's really, it's great just to feel their energy and their excitement about their culture.
And it was a good mix of dancing and singing, playing instruments.
And we also had the martial arts included too, so that was really cool. There's such a variety.
We had seven interpreters participate this year, and for them, it means a lot to bring their culture, be able to show different aspects of it and to teach it, but also to see the reception and the acceptance of it.
Which is our main focus.
And the families who participate really have a good time just coming out and showing the community what their culture is all about. And that's really the big thing, is we wanted everyone in the community to be able to see all of the different cultures that make up our three schools. I think it shows everyone, you know, how cool and what a great place Mount Airy is to not only live, but also the learning environment as well.
It really brings us all together, and we learn so much about each other, and it really is exciting. I think one of the best parts of our job, we work with a very diverse group of cultures, and you really learn to appreciate the differences, but then you see some similarities that kind of surprise you here and there, and it's just terrific.
I definitely want to thank Patty Burns and her group. We've had so many sidebars, and I want to showcase Carroll County Public Schools. And I am just very sad with all the negativity, and I'm going to keep on trying. We already have something in the works next month, too. But I want to promote what's great in Carroll County. Thank you. Take it away, Dr. McCabe. No, she doesn't have anything. No, she already told me. I did not ignore her.
I'd like to begin this evening by recognizing three members of our Advanced Academics Team who recently received awards presented by the Maryland State Advisory Council on Gifted and Talented Education. Sharon Lilly, Supervisor of Gifted and Talented Advanced Academics and Virtual Learning, received the District Coordinator Supervisor Leadership of Gifted and Talented Education Award. The award is given to a Maryland District Leader who has made significant contributions to expanding and improving programs and services for gifted and talented students in the school system. In addition, two of our GT Advanced Academic Specialists received the School-Based GT Specialist Leadership in Gifted and Talented Education Award. Denise Crestline at North Carroll and East Middle Schools, and Bethany Leader at Mount Airy and Northwest Middle Schools. I also would like to congratulate Media Specialist Catherine Berlin from Tawnytown Elementary School and Danielle Schwessinger from Elmer Wolf Elementary School. They have been named as finalists for the 2024 Maryland School Librarian of the Year by the Maryland Association of School Librarians. This award honors a school librarian for exemplary service and outstanding achievements in the field of school library media. The recipient will be announced in May. Congratulations as well to Liberty High School Junior Chloe Kang, who was a finalist in the WJZ Black History Oratory Competition. Chloe wrote a five-hundred-word essay based on a quote by Frederick Douglass. As a finalist, she had the opportunity to perform her essay in person in front of judges and an audience. The speeches were highlighted in February as part of WJZ's Black History Oratory Competition Special. On behalf of the school system and our secondary social studies department, I would like to thank the Carroll County State's Attorney's Office, the Carroll County Circuit Court, and the Carroll County Bar Association for their continued support of the High School Mock Trial Program. The Carroll County Bar Association generously covers the registration fee for all of the Carroll County teams that register to compete each season. This year, all seven Carroll County High Schools and Carroll Christian School participated in the program. And finally, I would like to thank everyone who came out to the Community Town Hall on the Blueprint on February twenty-sixth. As a reminder, I'll be hosting a second Town Hall on Monday, March twenty-fifth, at six P.M. at the Carroll County Career and Technology Center. I will be providing updated information on the implications of Blueprint on our schools, and there will be an opportunity for those in attendance to ask questions. I encourage you to attend if your schedule permits. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. McCabe. At this time, we will be having a presentation on portable electronic devices, and I definitely do need to make a statement. This is a presentation, and due to some of the newspapers, things were stated differently. So I just want to make sure that everyone knows that this is a presentation about portable electronic devices. And welcome, gang.
Thank you.
Board members, you had asked us to provide an update on where we stand with your portable electronic devices policy and regulations. Mr. Shokni has gathered some feedback from different groups, and he and a team he has gathered will present an update and respond to any questions or discussion the board may have. Mr. Shokni?
Good evening, board members. We are going to do just that. I have a team of folks here at the table. I also have an extended team of folks sitting slightly behind me that I'll introduce in just a moment. But at the table, we have Dr. Farver, who's our Director of Elementary Schools, Ms. Gramada, who's our Director of Middle Schools, Mr. King, our Director of High Schools, and Mr. Streeker, our Director of Student Services. Our presentation tonight also comprises a feedback from teachers and administrators from a focus group, and I'll talk more about that in a moment, as well as feedback from our bargaining units, CCA and EBSASCO. Slightly behind me, representing our schools, I have a few folks. We're going to do probably most of the presentation, but they're available for questions as we go, and they were vital members of a focus group as well. So we have Michelle Scobie, teacher from Carrolltown Elementary, along with Becky DePree, the principal at Carrolltown Elementary. We also have Chris Hines, principal at Mount Airy Middle, and then Sean Hamp, teacher at Manchester Valley, and then Mr. Guera, the principal at Manchester Valley. So we're very thankful to have them in attendance here tonight and thankful for all their hard work in preparing. Next part, I just want to take a moment, go over our objectives, as we often do with our presentations, and work through this a little bit. But as Ms. McCabe shared, our intent tonight is to provide an overview of our current board policy, JICJ, along with the associated administrative regulations, and include also feedback from our staff, what's happening in our schools, what's happening in other school systems. I'll share some relevant information and then discuss some potential recommendations. And again, I'll be the first one to say that as we work through this topic, there are differing viewpoints on the topic of portable electronic devices, specifically cell phones, in our school. But we're here for a presentation and a good discussion, and we want to make sure that you're informed to drive good decision-making across our system. Just a quick connection, this work directly connects with Pillars One and Four of our strategic plan. I always like to point those out as we go, so there's a direct connection there. I'm going to talk quick so we can get to a good discussion. History, as Dr. McCabe shared at a previous board meeting, the board requested a summary and review of our current work. I'd also like to point out that the current policy and administrative regulations were last revised in June of twenty nineteen, and that was a period of time prior to our current state of having a device and providing a device, a CCPS device, for every student. So when the current policy and regs were written, that we obviously, we had computers in our school, but nowhere near to the degree of a one-to-one device program that we currently have now. So I think that is a very, very key thing to keep in mind as we go, because we might ask ourselves some questions throughout the presentation about, hmm, but back then, maybe some of this made a little bit more sense than it does now. But we'll talk more about that as we go. As I alluded to, we started off by reviewing our current policy and regs. Our directors here had some, as they meet regularly and often with their principals and assistant principals, engaged in dialogue around what's working, what's not working, what are some challenges, and what are some suggestions for overcoming those challenges? And then the most important thing that we did was we had a focus group. This team here, the folks who are sitting in the first row, were there, along with several other teachers, and it was a kind of a drop-in session in which I asked just kind of three simple guiding questions. You know, what's working with the current policy and regs? What are the challenges with the current policy and regs? And then what suggestions do you have moving forward? And we're going to synthesize that as we go. We also took some time and did a little review of what our other local education agencies or LEAs around Carroll County are doing, so we've included that as well. And then we also sought out some written feedback from CCA and EBSASCO, our bargaining units that represent our teachers and our administrators as well. So you'll see slides from each of them as we work through the lesson as well. Oops. There we go. Our next slide, these are just hyperlinks for any citizen who may access the document that will take them straight to our policy, our regs, and then our student services, our student handbook that kind of synthesizes everything. All right, so it's a couple of things to keep in mind. When we look at our policy, the definition of a portable electronic device is any non-stationary electronic apparatus with singular or multiple capabilities of recording, storing, processing, or transmitting data, video, photographic images, or voice emanations, AKA cell phones. But we have to all keep in mind that there are other portable electronic devices beyond cell phones, and this technology is ever-evolving and changing. Things like laptops and tablets, obviously, we're a little bit more familiar with, but also smart watches. Smart glasses are becoming a little bit more of a thing. There are also some very unique and specialized GPS devices out there. We've heard of things like Apple AirTags that might exist for helping track a piece of luggage, but we also have other more advanced technologies like devices called AngelSense, which are some very specific technologies typically used by families of students with significant disabilities who might be at risk of elopement, and has some great opportunities and tools for helping keep track of students and keeping them safe as well. But, and then a big et cetera, because again, what is a portable electronic device is always changing and evolving. So I know the topic is often cell phones, but I wanted to point out that the policy and regs, as it stands, is inclusive of lots of other devices as well. So the regulations are broken down into a couple of different sections, and it starts off with a section for families. And this is, I want to bring clarity to this, but also a plea for support from our families. But the first bullet that's up there is the most important one. And whether or not a student has a personally-owned device or a cellphone, and this is when we're going to start to transition into more cell phones, is a family decision. And I can't emphasize that enough. Students are never, ever expected or required to bring a cellphone to school. And I think I really want to emphasize those two points for you and for our families and for anyone listening this evening. We strongly encourage families to consider whether a device is appropriate for their child and the age and grade of the student. Again, that's a family decision, but we ask families, as you make this decision, please make an informed one. Be educated. Think about your student, what your expectations are for that student. And most importantly, we need help from our families. So with our current policy and regs and wherever we may go down the road, we need support from our families to abide by our established rules. And we've had some breakdowns with that, and I think that compounds one of our big challenges of, as we work through it, not to spoil it, but a big challenge is inconsistency. And inconsistency across multiple stakeholders as it relates to cell phones. So, you know, we need families to work with us. We need families to trust that if a student is ill or sick at school, we're going to call you, okay? We've had families show up at the school to pick up students, and the student has never even been to the nurse's office. So that's a problem. So, you know, we need to make sure that families aren't texting students during the day. If there's an emergency, reach out to the school's front office. We'll be glad to connect you. We've also had some very significant events in children's lives be Be communicated through text messages, and we don't want that to happen. We have great, trained professionals and counselors in our building. And, you know, if there is a tragedy, if there is a crisis in the home, reach out to us. We can help communicate that information to that student a lot more effectively than through a text message or through a phone call. Students. The first piece I want to emphasize for our students is that a cellphone is never required for instruction. That is very, very important, both when the policy and regs were written back in 2019, but also today as well. You know, that's very important. Students may bring a device, including a cellphone, to school if they abide by the regulations. And then we also have very differentiated expectations by grade level, and we're going to talk about those more in just a moment. And when students misuse, if the student is not using that device appropriately, we will take appropriate disciplinary action with that student. All right. So the next thing that I want to do, and I'm going to turn it over to each of the level directors, and they're going to break down what it looks like at each level, because we've differentiated our expectations at the elementary, middle, and high school levels. So the expectations are different across all three. We're going to go through it in narrative form, but at the end, there's a chart that kind of puts all the pieces of the puzzle together. So I'll turn things over to Dr. Farver to talk about cell phones in elementary schools.
Good evening. So for the expectations for cell phones in elementary schools are, cell phones are to be silenced, and they are to be out of sight upon entering the school building, and then until the students have exited the building. They're highly discouraged, elementary school students, to bring them to schools or to bring them on the buses as well.
So that's important. They're highly discouraged. They're not prohibited per our current policy and regs, but we highly discourage students at the elementary level from bringing devices to school or on the bus. Ms. Gramada?
And at the middle school level, a little bit more freedom with them. So we, again, ask during instructional time in classrooms, the media center, the gymnasium, we ask for the restroom as well, very hard to monitor, but that's an expectation, and the locker rooms, that cell phones are silenced and stored, you know, out of sight during those times. They may use their devices, obviously, before school, after school, and during lunchtime if it's okay, if it's permitted by the principal. So we do have some leeway there. Depending upon disruptions, we have had some schools also have to not allow use in the hallways as well. It just depends upon what's kind of happening, you know, within the school building. We find that when they're not being used in the hallways, it does help with some, you know, with some of the disruption. And classroom teachers always have the authority to make exceptions for use in the classroom, but again, these were written, you know, in 2019. We really don't have much of a use in the classroom, you know, for them anymore.
And that's a key point that will turn into a recommendation as we get down the road, because again, as this was currently written, we didn't have a one-to-one device policy. We do now, and that makes a difference. And I would argue, there isn't anything instructionally that we would need to do on a cellphone that wouldn't be done and most likely done better on one of the CCS-provided laptops. We can do all those things. Mr. King?
So continuing with the theme, more responsibility, more privilege with the high school students. They should still be silenced and out of sight in the classroom, in the media center, in the gym, in the restroom, locker room, et cetera. They are welcome to use in between classes, before class, after school, and in the cafeteria. And again, the classroom teachers have the authority to make the exceptions. And really, the only one that comes to mind that's at all common is, some of the ag programs in different classes may do nature hikes. They have some outdoor classrooms at some of our high schools, and they may be taking pictures or observing nature, et cetera. But that's a pretty rare exception, and in a classroom, I agree with everything that's been said, rarely if ever are they needed, and we have the laptops to fill that instructional technology void.
All right. The next tab is consistent, these are consistent expectations across all level. The first bullet is essentially headphones. When they are being used, they should be silenced or be used with headphones when permitted. All right. The second piece is very key, and I want to point this out as well, that no portable electronic device shall be used to record, store, or transmit any type of image or sound, et cetera. When students violate this, we act, and we act significantly to address those issues. For example, if a fight were to break out and a student were to videotape the fight that happens, we discipline the student who recorded the fight in this instance. So we take this very, very seriously when it happens and we're made aware of what happens. And as always, we follow, we take disciplinary action as outlined in our Student Services Manual. Again, that can be accessed through our CCPS website, but that's kind of our core guiding, you know, principles for how we address discipline in our school system. The next piece is just a chart, which just kind of goes over, you know, if you look down the left, it has our levels, and if you look across the top of the chart, it has our locations, and it breaks down kind of in one slide by our current practices, again, current policy, current regs, when and where cell phones are allowed to be utilized. All right. Mr. Streaker, I'll turn things over to you for a couple of moments.
Sure. So when we think about the response when we have a student that's misusing their phone, it starts with the teacher in the classroom. And we know that it all goes back to relationships and expectations set within that classroom setting. And when you hear from students, and I've talked to some students, they seem to be very aware of what those expectations are within those classrooms. And we know that the most engaging instruction that we can have would also have students not being very involved in their cellphone use to begin with. But at the end of the day, it starts with the classroom teacher. The classroom teacher setting the expectation, addressing the situation, communicating with families. If a student's having a cellphone out, they should be communicating with families as they do with any disruptive behavior, whether that's chewing gum, shooting rubber bands from your braces like we did in 1984, or whatever that behavior may be. Cell phones are just a different thing that are kind of the same thing, but they're different and certainly more complex. So I think we need, like, that's where we start. If the teacher's working with a student, and that's not being successful, working with the student and family, and it continues to be disruptive, you know, they would fill out a referral, they would communicate with the administrator, who would then use progressive discipline as they move forward with working with the student. You know, we do have different considerations when we think about taking possession. One of the pieces people talk about is just take the student's phone from them, and we do have some significant concerns with a level of removing that device. These devices cost over $1,000 sometimes, and I don't know if we want our staff to be put in a situation of taking a $1,000 device and then being held accountable for the location of that device. So at the classroom level, we really have some significant concerns about, we need to be thoughtful in that and how we develop those practices within a school. And we encourage our teachers to be very thoughtful about that as well, because they are significantly expensive. Like, if you take one and you sit it on your desk, what happens if it disappears? If we took possession of it, there's some concern. So, but teachers work with that, they work with administrators, you know, and then the administration's working with the student's parent and the student themselves, and we would use our progressive discipline steps. You know, we certainly would communicate with them. We have detentions, we have Saturday schools for reasonable choices. We can ultimately can suspend a student if we go through all those levels. I will tell you that there are very few suspensions for cell phones, and that's not because we don't end up having cell phones contribute to a student's suspension, but it's more often that the student displays completely inappropriate behavior when we're dealing with their cellphone. And then the suspension is about the disrespect or the disruption that it causes, rather than actually being the cellphone. Similar to dress code. When we ask a student to abide by our dress code and they do, we don't have suspension. Often, if they don't, it manifests itself in a way that has nothing to do with the dress code anymore. It's about inappropriate language and behaviors that result at a higher level. So I definitely want to make that point out there. Another piece that I think is important, when we think about the, a lot of conversation of follow step one, two, three, and a very rigid process. Mr. Emile kind of remarked to this earlier this evening. KOMAR requires in law that we have to allow for discretion in imposing discipline. We cannot have a one, two, three, this is automatically what happens. The state law requires that we use discernment and discretion. We have to have that in any practice that we have. So we cannot make a blanket statement that on your X number of offense, Y will happen. You'll notice that all of our regulations regarding discipline will say things like "up to," that we recommend this up to that, and that is a cap, but it's clear that it doesn't limit an administrator's decision on what other interventions they might use to correct the behavior. And then we do know that multiple schools are using different techniques, a lot, and the big thing Mr. Shockney said earlier, talking about families, with family support and talking to families about the importance of working with us about the cellphone. And different schools have different pieces in place. I think they work with their staff, and in those schools where that's happening, I think we have a lot more success, but we still have, you know, struggles with kids on cell phones at some level. But the more we can do with different strategies that schools can work with, whether that's a system that they make where the student is advised to carry their phone themselves to the office or something, and then maybe they call and that person knows that it's coming, and then the administrator works with the family. So lots of different variations with that, but I think that our schools are doing different things in different places, and if we can learn from what's working best and kind of apply that uniformly across the system, we'll have more success.
Shortly, we're going to get into some feedback from our stakeholders, and no doubt about it, when we have to deal with cellphone issues, it does cause a disruption, and it does impact instruction. You know, if a teacher has to pause what they're doing to address something, you know, that takes time away from teaching, that takes time away from learning, and that is very frustrating. But I do applaud, many, our schools do this all the time. When problems and trends emerge, they work collaboratively to come up with solutions. And a lot of our high schools have done that around a couple of different strategies, and I'll talk a little bit more about that as we go as well, too. But again, schools work strategically to be able to address areas of concern. The next slide, I'm not going to go into great detail, but I did put some relevant information in here, a couple of journal articles, a few other periodical articles, as well as something that I found very fascinating, the Surgeon General's Advisory on Social Media. I would highly encourage parents, take a few minutes and read that, talking about the challenges and concerns with social media, and giving students, families some suggestions on how they can work with their child. But you'll see, if you click through these links, I try to be representative of probably both sides of the argument. You know, there's some articles here that will point out that cell phones are a disruption, and when we take that disruption away, kids do better. There are also articles that would say, when you remove cell phones, you increase student anxiety inadvertently. So again, I try to be representative of both sides of the topic from this. And that will segue us into the feedback piece, and I did put a rather lengthy disclaimer in there, but where I was trying to get with this is, you know, there are differing viewpoints on this one. And I will say without question, different schools at different levels experience different successes as well as challenges related to cell phones, okay? So it's different. And again, as we, when we get to it, you're more than welcome to ask staff their feedback, and you'll notice that there are differing viewpoints as to what will work. So focus group. So the first part I want to talk about is kind of a little bit of the feedback from the teachers. I talked about the three guiding questions, and these were the same questions that I used across all groups. But feedback from our teachers, what's working? Many of our students are compliant, and they understand the expectations and they follow those expectations. But at the same time, I'll also say, some of our teachers said that was also a challenge as well. Kind of universally, our teachers did say that we, having differentiated expectations at each level, helped, because obviously, our high schoolers are developmentally in a very different place than where our elementary schoolers are. Challenges. Like I mentioned before, cell phones can be a disruption, and it takes time away from instruction. Another big one is inconsistent applications across rules, of rules across classrooms within a school. So teacher A might have one set of expectations, teacher B might have a different set of expectations. That could be a challenge. I've also heard that that's a good thing, as long as the kids know what the expectation is. So, you know, again, the different sides of the argument and different viewpoints on this one as well. No doubt about it, cell phones can compound problems related to bullying, vaping, or being out of assigned areas. With cell phones, it's very easy to schedule a meetup that may not be approved. And using devices during class stages, lunches can be a challenge. Maybe the student does very appropriately use that device in the hallway as it's allowed, but as they walk into the classroom, it takes some redirections or prompting to put that device away. Let's get started with work. Could delay the lesson from getting going. Recommendations for our teachers, and again, different recommendations from different folks. Requires cell phones to be stored in lockers or in backpacks during the school day. Eliminate the ability to use cell phones for instructional purposes. You will find that's a common theme as we go. We don't need them for instructional purposes, because we've got laptops. And then also, a very thoughtful one, to make sure that we allow special considerations for students with documented medical needs. For example, some of our students with diabetes may use a device to help monitor their blood sugar levels. That's very appropriate. And in all those instances, we have those very well documented, either in a health plan, an IEP, or a 504. But currently, our policy and regs don't include a reference to that. Our administrators. What's working? School-based adaptations on expectations. The fact that, like the elementary school level, for example, principals decide when it's appropriate. One of our principals in our focus group said, "I allow our eighth graders to earn it, but our sixth and seventh graders don't have the ability to." That might be a little different in some other places, but again, our principals and our teachers know our kids, and again, we trust their decision-making as well. As well as, at the high school level, some high schools have started using, or have been using, what they may call cellphone violation forms. So if a student's been found to be in violation of the cellphone policy, they fill out a form, they take that form, the administrator fills out the discipline referral for the teacher to try to save time. But I also know that there are other teachers that say, you know what, I can just enter that discipline referral myself. It doesn't get the kid out of my class, I can do it quickly. But, you know, again, that's a, you know, different approaches in different places can be effective. Challenges. At the elementary level, our elementary principals did point out that smart watches can be a challenge for students, because oftentimes, a smart watch can function just like a cellphone, and sometimes that can be a disruption to students. Families texting and calling students during the day, we referenced earlier. Social media, oftentimes, challenges with social media, things that happen outside of the school day that spill over into the school day. That was a common theme as I listened to feedback from our folks. Inconsistent application of allowing devices for instructional purposes, complications with conducting investigations when it comes to, you know, when the involvement, we have, you know, something involved with a cellphone, and then to confiscate the device or not. Some of our schools may choose to do that, others do not. That has its complicating factors as well. The recommendations, maintain the current policy. With the addition of laptops, there's no need for cell phones for instructional purposes. And then improve consistency of holding students accountable for expectations. There is no doubt about it, as I'm jumping to kind of the summary here, consistency is a problem for us, and we can and will do better with that. I also asked for feedback from CCA and the good folks there. Around the same three questions, gave some feedback. What's working? Those differentiated expectations came up again. Challenges. Inconsistent enforcement of the current policy and regs across classrooms within a school. That's been shared before. Cell phones, again, are not necessary with access to CCPS-issued laptops. And a big one here, too, employees not modeling expected behavior by using their phones in front of students. We have to be mindful that we, and myself included, you know, we have to set the tone and example for our students, so with everything. And if we expect our students to do something, we need to model what we expect. So that's very important. So recommendations. Allow individual teachers to establish their own rules and consequences related to cell phones that can be enforced by administrators. And then use the school discipline committee to determine how the school will handle cell phones, and that speaks to that greater collaborative process. Ms. Jordan earlier referenced those discipline committees. They are valuable to our work in schools and making sure that we are collaborating with and hearing from our teachers as it relates to discipline. Our administrators, and I'm getting there, folks. What's working? From our administrators, clearly defined expectation. Clearly defined, students bring devices at their own risk, all right? That's very clear with what we say to students at the beginning of the year. Challenges. Smart watches can be disruptive. Inconsistent expectations from bus drivers regarding device usage while on the bus. And again, complicated at the elementary level. We encourage students not to, but sometimes they do. You know, if a student is using their device on the bus, we want that individual student to be using the device, not five students huddled around that student using device. It is a personal portable electronic device, not a group one. Kind of determining who is responsible for enforcing rules, it's that delicate balance of, you know, when, you know, when, how we handle that enforcement piece. Is it a classroom piece? At what point in time does it turn into more of an administrative thing as well? And then recommendations. Consider adding language to the administrative regulations to address smart watches. Consider clarifying expectations for the bus, and consider having devices out of sight and in lockers at all levels. All right. So other LEA- All right, so other LEAs and cell phones, I'll turn things over briefly to Mr. Streker, who's just going to give us a quick update as to what some of our surrounding school systems are doing.
So I communicated with some of the folks close by directly, and then other things, was able to get off their websites and whatnot. In a nutshell, they're all doing versions of the same thing. Some of them are looking at updating their practices. Frederick and Hartford particularly right now are in the middle of a revision. Their revisions seem in general, generalizing, leaning towards actually more in alignment with what we're doing now. Baltimore County's, as it's articulated there, currently is very much in alignment with what our system has, with the exception of, you know, grades three and above, so they don't differentiate elementary only, but the general theme is the same, I think, when you look into it. One thing that I believe Frederick County is moving away from, I do want to note, they have a form technically that people have to sign in order to give parents permission. Their existing reg is very, I won't say very old, but for technology, it's very old. And I think they've struggled tremendously with, if a parent has not said you have permission, how does a teacher manage out of the 30 kids in the class? Which ones had a thing that said they did and didn't? And it just creates a tremendous challenge. I understand their, my instinct is that they're moving away from that aspect and moving into it's a parent's choice. I don't know many children who pay for their cell phones, so my guess is that they have it, their parents know they have it, but I could be wrong about that. But especially elementary kids. In our areas like in PA, Southwestern as well as Littlestown, Southwestern's district is a little bit more wide open. Their language is pretty open on what the use can be, it's for instructional purposes and during non-instructional time, as long as they're not disruptive. I think the theme is, if it's not causing a problem, you can use it. And Littlestown, there is, from what I could read, a little bit of conflict between what their policy, they have a stated policy that pretty much says you cannot have a cellphone at all, and that the, that regulations will be developed, and there are no regulations I can find, but all of their school handbooks that were just updated this year all basically say you can have a cellphone. So that's interesting to me. And that policy was written before their student handbook. So it's almost like they said, you can't have one, but each school will develop the regulation. Remember, their schools are like one per level, and they basically have very parallel practices to what we have in their student handbooks when you dive into them.
Thank you. And to give kudos to our colleagues in Hartford County, I think their focus group report is a collaborative effort that's done over time. There's a lot of interesting findings that came from that, so there's a hyperlink there if any of our citizens would like to check that out. So transitioning into challenges and barriers, and I've alluded to some of these already, but consistency is a challenge for us, and it's something that all of us can do better. Our students can do better, our staff can do better, and our families can do better when it comes to making sure we clearly communicate the expectation and hold ourselves accountable for those expectations. And again, this isn't a criticism or a knock, we work very hard at what we do, and our staff, you know, really does put out great expectations. But again, this is a good opportunity, and as I'll get into recommendations next, to review and revisit what it is that we're expecting and be clear about it and be consistent about it. The conflicting viewpoints, as we work out from here, as we continue to engage, as we reflect on this, again, we will find, you know, a variety of viewpoints on this topic and, you know, and everything in between as well as we go. The other challenges, our schools all function a little bit differently. One of our recommendations was, well, let's just keep cell phones in lockers, or let's just keep cell phones in backpacks. That could work in some places, but may not work in every place. Some of our schools, the way they're structured with their schedule, students may only visit their lockers at the beginning of the day and the end of the day, and may rely on backpacks throughout the course of the day. And in other places, they may not use backpacks and may rely solely on lockers during the course of the day. Some of our lockers lock, some of them don't. So, you know, that's, it's a little different in places, and again, not a barrier that cannot be overcome, but a challenge that exists. The other big piece, and I think this will be a theme both today and as I am back on Monday, is the need for professional learning on classroom management, especially for our new teachers. You've heard us talk many a times about our induction program and needing to expand how we train, how we onboard our new teachers. And again, you know, that's a big part of this. Classroom management is a big pivotal piece to this, whether it comes to, fill in the blank on the expectation, whether it's cell phones or anything else related to, you know, desired student behavior within the classroom. We have to teach it, we have to model it, we have to coach it, we have to reinforce it. That is a big, big piece of what we do. A lot of times, we make assumptions that students know, and we have to take the time and opportunity to make sure we teach. And again, we hold students accountable for those expectations as well. A huge challenge is, no matter what we do, however we tackle this challenge, there may be a short-term loss of instructional time as we renorm and reset our expectations. But again, managing any policy or reg, especially when there's a change, you know, can result in, you know, needing greater time to address, which could result in instructional time. And then the other piece that always exists is that social media problem that often, sometimes happens during the day, but many times, and my colleagues will hopefully agree with me on this, in that, you know, we have a lot of things that happen into the evening that spill over during the school day. That's when we really need engagement from our families. Be in tune as to what your kids have access to on their phones, be in tune to what they're doing on their phones, and teach them and hold them accountable to the expectations set by families as well. So next slide, there's two sets of recommendations. I have recommendations now and recommendations down the road. These are just recommendations, I'm not set on these in any way. Board members, if you want to go in a different direction, we are all ears and will be more than willing to do something differently. But my recommendations are, let's maintain the current policy for now. Let's work to improve consistency across classrooms with our expectations. From, you know, as we move forward, the school directors here will work with our principals to let's revisit what those expectations are, how are we holding our students accountable to those, what are we doing when students are not meeting those expectations? And again, how are we teaching and holding students accountable for what it is that we want them to do? Continue to allow school teams to address specific areas of concern. Schools get very creative in how they go about solving problems. And then if there is, you know, a desire for more information, consider a survey of stakeholders to find out, you know, what others may recommend as we go. Another potential recommendation for next year is, for the next school year, let's take some time to modernize the regulations. Let's remove the use of cell phones for instructional purposes with the one-to-one device policy or program that we have, excuse me. There's no need for cell phones for instructional purposes. I could easily see that language being removed from the regulations. I could also see some additional language around, you know, that piece that for documented medical needs, that maybe students, you know, with either a medical plan or health plan or an IEP or 504, that requires access to technology for medical reasons to be allowed. The other piece is to take some time and develop and implement a clear communication campaign around expectations for students. I'd love to be able to engage with our students at our Career and Technology Center, get some student stakeholder groups together. Let's differentiate a campaign so we could have something consistent across all elementary schools, across all middle schools, across all high schools, around what we expect and the civil and responsible use of devices should we continue to go in the direction of where we are. And then also to expand those professional learning opportunities for staff, especially our new teachers, as we have talked about before. But that, board members, I know that took a little while, but I wanted to be able to get to everything. We're available for questions, our folks from our schools are here, so gladly answer any questions.
I want to thank you all for being here, and I know I spent an hour with Sean one morning at Man Vow, and I've been to quite a few sporting events, and I have talked to educators, SROs, I've talked to students. And I think my feedback was, first of all, that seven-step discipline approach to put it in the computer takes away from the class time, and it's always more than one student using their phones. So if we do the recommendations, and we do not need them in the classroom because we already have their laptops, that is something we definitely need to, you know, move forward with. I will tell you, parents and children alike are addicted to these phones, and it's a sad state. Students told me that, I said, why do you need your phone in your classroom? Well, my friend may gave me a text, or they may send me a Snapchat picture. Well, I thought, well, what's that kid doing in the other class, you know? So they are afraid they're going to miss their 1,000th text for that day or a picture. And that is really taking away for our academic endeavors. But I did ask them, and that is really a sad state of affairs. And we really do need our parents to follow our rules. Don't text your child out on the parking lot. I'm coming in to pick you up because we're going shopping, but you go to the health room and tell them you're sick. You know, we're here, we're a school, they're there to learn. So, you know, I was so glad to talk to people. Definitely, teachers said consistency, and you spot on with new teachers. You know, I had a backbone, and as I started the meeting tonight, I waited, everybody was quiet. And that's how I run things, and that's me. But new teachers have so much on their plate, cell phones are not their priority, but then they realize after week one or two or three, like, oh, it's out of control. So they need help. And I think it's very interesting, and I, some parents don't know this, but we have children that will set up fights, boys and girls, they'll set them up in a bathroom or right in the cafeteria, they will announce it to the world, and they will send it through their little text that there's going to be a fight, and then they videotape it. I was appalled because I saw one, and I was like, this is going on in Carroll County public schools. So if they can't have their phones in their hands, we cannot have disruptions on the school bus. I just want us to get back. I don't want to say we cannot have cell phones, but they need to be at a certain time, but not in a classroom, not in a bathroom videotaping a fight or something that's going on buses. And I thought it was very interesting, I even talked to an SRO, and he said, parents come into him with a video of a fight, and he, and those parents want to lock this kid up. If you look at our school calendar, on the very first page, when you open it up, there is a procedure to follow for these type of things. So we need the help from our parents, and we need our students to understand what's going on. They do not need a 15-second claim to fame on one of their Snapchat things where they're in a fight, and, you know, what's that going to get them? They need to be in their classrooms and doing their academics. And I think Mr. Hand also told me that during AP or MCAP or some kind of test, that they're not allowed, and if they put them up on the counter, the kids get uptight about they're looking at their phones rather than taking their tests, and that's a sad state of affairs. Yeah, it's, they are addicted. I go into high schools, at lunchtime, they don't talk to each other. It is a sad state of affairs. I don't know what the world's going to come to, but we need to communicate, put those cell phones down, talk to each other, you know? And it would really change the world, but I want to, you know, I want to help Carroll County public schools. I want, I don't want distractions in the classrooms, they need to be working on their academics. And also, it's a safety issue. So I don't know what else to say, but I could care less about my texting, and I don't even have, I don't even know what, I really don't, wouldn't even know how to get on Instagram, but, you know, I have a horse farm. So if something happens at my farm, if I have a horse get hurt or break a leg, which I've had, and colic or whatever, my guy needs to get ahold of me and let me know what's going on, you know? Or if something terrible has happened here at one of our schools. But I'm not addicted to my phone, I would rather really throw it over the Bay Bridge and never see it again when I go across, but that would be littering, and I don't want to do that. But it's, we really need to work on this, and we really need to help our teachers because they need, they do not need to be phone Nazis, and we need to help them, and we need to fix this. So that's it. Ms. Pataglio.
All right, well, I'll be the big bad wolf then.
Okay.
I think in elementary schools, I think honestly, in elementary, it just, no.
Forget it, no.
A lot of these kids don't understand really what is going on with the phones and the apps, and I know that the parents are buying them and the parents are paying for them. But I'm sorry, I think elementary schools are just way too young to be having these allowed in the school system. I do think potentially having parents sign acknowledgement beginning of the school year, that middle school and high school, that if they're going to bring their cellphone to school, that very well. If they violate the policy, it will be confiscated, and they will have to come into the school to pick it up, and the school system's not responsible if the phone's lost. You know, I mean, they take a chance of bringing it in, so to me, that's a chance that they're going to take if they misbehave, and, you know, I've had a couple of conversations with Mr. Guerrero, and by all means, stomp on his, okay? If my son misbehaves, stomp his, I don't care, trash it, flush it, whatever needs to be done because he aggravates me. Educators do have the power now to take away the cell phones, and same as administrators, just do it. Take it away, confiscate it, call the parent, say, hey, your kid's misbehaving, they're not doing what needs to be done, they're videotaping, which violates school policy, not allowed to videotape other kids in the bathroom or in the hallway or anything of that magnitude. And I think definitely in middle and high schools during the day, it's got to be put away, you know? If they want to have it out at lunch, okay, lunch, I'll be okay with lunch, you know, catch up on whatever on lunch. But other than that, no, like, it needs to be just put away. We have, there is so much going on in the world, and our kids rely on social media and TikTok for their news and for their information, and a lot of it's fake, it's a lot of it's false, and it, we need to teach our kids the proper way to get information that's in our media centers, that's with our teachers. I mean, to me, that's the best way to do it. And yes, parents, you, I'll admit, my son has texts being in the middle of the day going, oh, I don't feel good. I'm like, okay, go to the nurse. Don't text me again, you're in school. I tell him. But as parents, we definitely got to make sure our kids are not, you know, we're not texting our parents like, I'm on my way to come pick you up to go shopping or anything like that. Like, I think we definitely need to do better. So yes, I'll be the big bad wolf and put them away, and not in elementary school, and we're going to hold parents accountable and the students.
Mr. Whistler.
Thank you so much, Madam President. First of all, thank you so much for bringing and giving us background and the history, and I really appreciate the educators and the administrators. Long day, right? Thank you for being here. I do have some really big concerns. I'm very concerned about our student privacy and our educator privacy. I'm very concerned about seeing our classrooms videotaped, our educators videotaped, our students videotaped. It is a very big concern I have. I also have a very big concern with students using cell phones during transition periods in hallways, as I think it creates a safety issue. More importantly, using cell phones during transitions to and from our bus loops, I think it creates a very, very big safety issue with our buses. And I would really love to see us get a lot more feedback from our students, and also from our parents and our transportation contractors. I really want to see what their thoughts are before we move forward and make any major policy changes. I would love to ensure that we preserve as much as possible flexibility for our administrators and our educators. They really need to have the flexibility to bend the rules when they see fit. You know, something that comes to mind may be like, you know, hey, there's an MCAP test today, if you finish, you can break out your phones. But honestly, I'd rather see our kids break out a book than a phone. You know, our children have lost the inclination to pick up a book and read. Our children have lost the inclination to think on their own, but instead turn to ChatGPT to write a paper. They've lost the inclination to talk and collaborate face-to-face with a child. Instead, they text somebody that's two rows away. It's really problematic, and I think that although it's tough, I know that we're going to have a lot of kickback from some parents and many students, I think the benefits will far outweigh the detractors if we really take a hard look at significantly limiting cellphone use throughout the entire day, from the morning bell to the evening bell, even during lunchtime. Let our children collaborate and talk and joke and develop relationships when they're sitting across the tables at lunch. Our children need to develop relationships, empathy, friendships. I think this is one. I think this is one of the reasons why we see, uh, outbursts, um, not just because it contributes to it, but because our kids just can't communicate and collaborate and, and, and engage in conflict resolution with words. Instead, they use, um, very impersonal and, um, uh, very unprofessional texting and pictures that can be construed in so many different ways based on the sender and receiver. So, um, I, I really appreciate your, your time. I really appreciate this really important look, but I am in, under the, uh, you know, I'm really leaning towards just seeing a complete and utter removal of our cell phones from morning bell to afternoon bell. And I think we should even consider, um, such a policy on our buses from a safety perspective. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Dorsey.
Okay, I appreciate the differentiation of levels, but honestly, I sort of agree with, uh, Mr. Whistler here. It's almost like if everybody could follow the elementary, um, set of guidelines that, you know, it would create, or it would, um, get rid of some of the problems that we might have during lunchtimes and hallway times if, if students are using their phones inappropriately. And something else I just wanted to comment on that you had just talked about, the standardized testing. I don't know how it's done now, but it used to be that if you finished your testing early, you couldn't take anything out.
Right.
Um, and again, that served as a motivation. You spend your time working on the test because you're not going to be allowed to pull out a book, a piece of paper to draw on or anything. Um, so, you know, I, I think that's still the case, that they're, that they shouldn't be allowed to do that. Um, but again, thank you all for sharing with us. And again, we do have to make sure that we are having a focus on teaching and learning because that's what it's all about. And schools, such great socialization places. Um, and how do we better socialize? Well, it's, it's face to face, person to person, and, um, again, that's why I would think that if we had, um, the policy where if the phones were brought to school, if they were put away from the beginning of the day and not picked up again until they were on the way out the door, would be fine for me, uh, or with me. Um, I'm rather old school. I mean, we didn't have to deal with it as much certainly, um, when I was still in the system. Um, I was, um, intrigued by the, the modeling statement that was made, that certainly we would want our teachers and our adults, um, to model the expectations that we're sharing with the students. I look around here, and everybody has a cellphone right out in front of them. Um, and again, and I'm sure everybody else has one very handy as well. Um, so again, I think with some training and some, some work, we too can put ours, um, away. I, um, do like the idea of, of, um, having some input certainly, um, from our student groups, some more input or feedback, um, from them. So Sahitha, I'll be interested in hearing what you have to say, um, as you talk, um, for the students at this point. And I had a question, um, concerning our elementary level. Again, I, it's always been, you know, that we're recommending that, um, the phones not be brought to school or that they not be on the bus. Do you have a sense for how many of our elementary students actually have a cellphone?
I, I would say most, if they do, it's usually in fourth and fifth grade. Um, it's fourth and fifth grade, it's usually because those students are able to go home without parents being at home. So they're usually used when they're getting on and off the bus.
Looking back to Mr. Freed, you got a, have a message?
I was gonna say, from the actual school staff?
I would say it definitely depends on the school, I think. I haven't been in.
What about your school, pretty much?
So I would say Carrolltown, uh, Mrs. Scobie and I were just talking about this, I anticipated this question, so. I would say about a third of our upper grade students have cell phones, but what we see more consistently, starting in kindergarten, are the watches. Um, are real consistent, um, disruption.
Hmm. And that's very interesting, so starting in kindergarten with the watches.
For sure, yep.
Okay, okay. Um, so then, does that create issues then during the school day? I mean, are they using those inappropriately or at times when, certainly, they shouldn't be used at all if we're saying they should be either in their locker?
Well, they're supposed to be out of sight, so what our staff does is we don't look for them. If they're covered by their clothing, um, we don't, you know, make it, an effort to go and check everyone's wrist to see if they have them on or not. But what does happen is parents will text, um, kids, parents will show up at the school to drop off a jacket or, you know, different things, um, kids will, um, parents will show up, as someone mentioned earlier, to pick up a sick child who the child didn't tell anyone else that they weren't feeling, feeling well, things like that. And even in the classroom, you even know as adults, if you have the watch on, I mean, your inclination is to be distracted by it, you're looking at it. Kids ages, you know, five to 11, don't often have the diligence and self-control to not be doing that. So that's what I'm hearing from classroom teachers most often is it's this, you know, they're looking, it's making noises sometimes, but even when they're silent, it can be a distraction.
Okay, all right, well, thank you.
Sure.
For that response.
Anything else, Dr. Dorsey?
No, that's it, I think.
All right, um, I've already used mine twice tonight. Celeste was hot, so she texted me, and she texted me. And then Donna just texted me and said that she has comments, so sometimes.
I think it's okay during college.
Donna raised her hand, and we.
And Donna, yes, because I can't see it the way the angle is, so Donna, take it away.
We can tell you.
You're on.
Thanks, guys, yeah, it was, uh, I appreciate the opportunity to, to provide a couple of comments, but, um, I did want to thank, um, Mr. Shokni and, and the, the rest of the team, uh, for providing this information um, and, and the extensiveness of the review. Um, I think it was really helpful to get the perspectives of teachers and administrators, um, CCEA, various groups. Um, I think one of the things that, that isn't represented here, and we talked about a little bit, is, you know, getting the student focus groups. I definitely would like to hear some of the students' opinions, um, as well as other stakeholders, like, you know, with parents. Um, Ms. Pataglia, I don't know if this subject was discussed at CAC at all recently, but I think that it would be good to get feedback from that group as well for the, the parent stakeholder groups. Um, I'm sorry, was.
No, they didn't.
Were you saying something, Tyra?
No, we didn't discuss that at CAC, but it's something that we can probably bring up for the next one, which is in April, yeah, we have one in April.
Okay, okay. But I think, um, and, and Dr. Dorsey said this, and I agree wholeheartedly, it, it's, it's, you know, everything that we do is supposed to be about student achievement and learning. And I think that we're seeing that the cell phones are just so distracting. They're just one more distraction in the classroom, and it takes away from the learning process, takes away from the student achievement. And, um, I think that it's time to modernize the policy. Um, you know, given the history that, that was provided earlier, you know, it was, we, we need to deal with watches, with smartwatches, we need to deal with a post-one-to-one, uh, world, right? Like, once, uh, once COVID hit and we, we got everyone on a, to a one-to-one basis, we don't really need cell phones for instructional purposes. That was one of the reasons why we brought them in originally was because we, we thought that it would be, it would add to, um, instructional capabilities, but it's not needed anymore. So I think we really do need to modernize the policy. And, um, you know, I, I think, Sahitha, you had, you had said, um, I think at a, at an earlier board meeting where students are just looking for consistency. Um, and, you know, it's, uh, we, we were trying to provide flexibility to teachers and administrators, but that leads to maybe some inconsistent practices across different classrooms and different schools. And so maybe we do just need to provide more consistency. Um, and I agree wholeheartedly about the, the comments about, you know, extending professional learning for, you know, classroom management for new teachers. That makes a ton of sense. Um, but I, I just wanted to kind of talk about next steps, right? Like, if we're saying that we want to make recommendations for next year, right? Clearly, this would be a good thing to, if we're gonna be making changes, that you'd want to roll it out uh, before the, the beginning of the next school year, um, so that we, you can, uh, roll it out on a consistent basis right from the beginning of the year. So what would the next steps need to be, right? Like, we'd need to have a, a session, you know, I, I guess staff would need to come to us with recommendations, or if we can provide what we think our recommendations would be for updating the policy, what kind of timeline would that look like? Um, so, so those, those are just the comments that I, that I wanted to make, and make sure that we know what our next steps are so that we handle this in a timely and effective fashion.
Ms. Sevigney, I agree with those comments, and, um, we would certainly need to get feedback from student groups as well as parent groups. And if we were to roll some, roll the changes out, whatever changes they may be, um, we have enough time between now and the start of next school year to get that inform, get, go out, get that information and bring it back to you, um, at a meeting coming up, um, probably not April, but, you know, maybe, um, a May or June meeting so that then, uh, you could make, um, recommendations for us to revise the policy and regs, and then we could get them in place, um, so that we're ready to roll it out, uh, over the summer.
Sahitha, I think.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Sevigney. Uh, and then we're gonna say best for last. I gave some comments, what students have told me, so take it away.
Right, I think that we need more than just my voice on this, for sure. It's, it's not, every single student has their own individual idea of what this is, just as teachers and administrators do. Um, we mentioned earlier, you mentioned earlier in the presentation that it's, differs from each school to school, but I think we can go even further than that and say that it also differs by teacher to teacher. It goes as far to say, as you know what the rules are in one classroom, and you know what the rules are in others, and you know what rules you can be more flexible on in one classroom versus another classroom. I think that's a key point that leaves students behind. I think what we need to do in, um, when we're discussing this policy and when we're setting it up for future, um, school years, um, when I'm not gonna be here, um, more transparency for students on what the rules are. I think me personally, I can remember the last time that I had an assembly on what the rules were, not just cellphone policy, what the rules were in general for, um, my school were, was my transition from elementary to middle, which, by the way, I went to Calhoun, so. Um, that was the last time, and it was, I, I know that this adjustment, not to say the C-word, but COVID has greatly affected how much students have depended on technology in general. I know that after a whole year of only being able to work virtually, it still affects me, it still affects students to this day on how we depend on technology, not just our computer, but our cell phones. For a whole, I, I want to put into perspective on why students might feel as though they wish to have it by their side in their backpack for quick, um, access. A whole year, that was the only way students were able to communicate with each other. A whole year, more than that at this point, in which students, this was their only way of being able to talk to people. And in that transition, this was not just students, this was adults. Everybody was sort of confined to their own homes for a whole year. And more than that, it, it makes, it still affects us to this day in how students treat technology. Um, I just learned today that you can get in trouble for filming a fight. If students don't understand that this is a rule that they need to follow, then I don't think we, as people who are creating these rules, can expect students to follow them. So I think we need to make sure that we're transparent with the rules and we create clear guidelines, not just for teachers, but for students as well. Because I remember going into high school virtually, my freshman year was virtually, and I'm sure that other people experienced middle school and elementary school virtually, that there were no rules. And so when they went to their next year, it was all just an adjustment, and there was no guideline. So we're seeing behavior problems, and I know we can say that student behavior, which is a work session that we're having coming up, is correlating with cellphone usage. We don't know how much, but we do know that it is. And so what we need to do is, while I'm not sure how this policy will be, um, changed in the upcoming years, I do know we need students involved in the creation of this policy, and we need students to, we need people to teach students what the policy is going to be because otherwise, how are we supposed to enforce rules that they don't know, you know? So I think that's, that's what I have. Um, I'd love to hear some feedback on that.
Thank you so much for that information. Uh, Ms. Pataglia.
I was gonna say, I think that's one of the biggest pieces that Mr. Shokni brought was there's gotta be the consistency. Because I know from my, from where my son goes to school, and his principal's right over there, there's, like, it's laid out, like, this is what your expect, your expectations are here at the school. And every teacher he has had, he brings a syllabus home where I have to sign it. So I think that's a huge piece, and I like the consistency of that, because that's, like, to me, that's important. Like, I'm, I'm given, like, this is what it's gonna be in his grade and what, what he's gonna have in a class, and there's rules that the teacher has, and I sign it. And I think that's just one of the big pieces, is there, there's gotta be that consistency. And I thank you very much for everything that you do, by the way, because I'm a happy parent, so, there you go.
Yes, Mr. Whistler.
I'm sorry, thank you very much for your feedback. One more point that I forgot to mention when I was speaking. I really want to hope, I, I really hope we make sure that we communicate our policy to our substitutes as well. We have a lot of substitutes come in, and as a classroom teacher, the way the kids are when I'm there are completely different from when the substitutes are there. So making sure that the substitutes that we employ know the policy, that they follow through on it, but more importantly, they know whom to call, um, when, when things don't go as planned. Thank you.
Thank you. Do any of the five of you want to say anything else? Mr. Hand, Mr. Greer, anybody? Okay, I, I, you know, if you want to say something, I mean, you've all worked on this. Well, I thank each and every one of you.
Joe was like, kinda like.
Oh.
Go ahead.
Go, get up there. That's why I said, does anybody want to speak? Gotta raise your hand.
I'll just say very briefly to, um, excuse me, to put a, to put a number to, uh, the impact that it has on our school. I can't speak for any other high school or any other school, um, but up to this point, we have well over five hundred, uh, referrals in the system for cellphone violations. Excuse me. It's also important, I think, to, to note the number of referrals that aren't entered by teachers because of the time it takes for them to do that. So it is a, it is a significant problem, um, at Manchester Valley, and I'm sure across many schools. Excuse me.
Good, I thank you for your honesty, because as I talked to teachers before, and Sean, and I'd been over and talked to other of your, of your educators, that they said that that seven-step approach is just way too much, and they don't want, you know, they will say something, but they want to keep on teaching, and we, we need, we, that's one of the things we need to fix. And that's what we're gonna do. And thank you for your, your input on that, because it's very important.
Thank you.
Yep, it's real. Anybody else? Go ahead. Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Whoa, 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 whoa.
I'm sorry. Oh, I can sit down if you'd like. Okay, thank you. Thanks for, uh, having my feedback tonight. Um, we're really lucky in Mount Airy, a really good community there. It's very involved, our parents are very involved, which we're appreciative of. I think the big thing is the, uh, consistency and, and, um, giving them the, you know, what our rules are. I heard tonight that, you know, students aren't aware of what the expectations are. So I think it's really important to back the school nights. Uh, these things are very much outlined, what they are. Having open conversations with parents, uh, has been a huge part of the buy-in. Um, with some of our parents, if we have to call after a phone's been confiscated, a lot of times, if it's a repeat, they're like, I'm starting the car, I'll be right on up to get the phone. So, um, some of our parents have even said, if you'd like to keep it, please do. Um, so we've, uh, we're very lucky, but I think the consistency piece, um, is huge. But I think we, as administrators, uh, really have to communicate, make sure that our students, uh, and our parents are on board and understand why we are strict on this, um, on this policy.
Do you have a number of maybe referrals or incidents?
So, uh, this year, um, you know, some of the stuff is, could be related to other incidents. Um, however, just strictly on cell phones, uh, hardly any this year. Um, you know, we've kind of taken a stricter stance over the last two years. Uh, we met as a leadership team, we felt that was very important. Um, you know, as a school, we brought teachers' feedback in. We also talked to our PTO, wanted to hear their feedback. Um, so therefore, our, our, I believe our referrals on cell phones have declined significantly in the last two years, um, where we, we don't really have to deal with them a whole lot.
So you've set the expectations from the beginning?
Yes, yes.
That's fantastic, that's great, and I like that community partnership, that's great. Any, anyone else? Scobie? Excellent teacher, I've seen her teach. Sean? Yep, you want to say anything? I know you've talked to us before, but, okay, all right. Well, thank you all, because I know this took a long time, but we really need to get on this, and we really, we, we need to do it and do it right. And I thank you for all your time.
And we will, uh, work on getting, uh, feedback from students and parents, and then we will bring that information back, um, along with, with more feedback for revisions for next school year. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. I can't believe you're all leaving.
Yeah.
I know, because you had baseball practice today.
I'm leaving.
All right. Now, we will move on to the construction report.
This is the standard monthly construction report. One thing I'd like to note is that later in the agenda, there are action items on the award of bids that relate to the report. We are bringing the contracts for the roof replacements at North Carroll Middle and Spring Garden Elementary. As with the two HVAC projects that we brought in January, one of these two roof projects, the one at North Carroll Middle, came in slightly overbid. The contract award required some adjustments with the State Interagency Commission on School Funding, known as the IAC, and ultimately required the county to increase local participation by just $100,000. We consulted with county staff, who understood and made that adjustment. As with the HVAC examples, when you vote on your final budget in May, we will also bring all updated CIP projects for your approval, which will reflect these changes. Mr. Marks is available if there are other questions about the report.
Ms. Sevigny? Oh, there she goes. Come on down, Mr. Marks. I was waiting for a hand or something.
You know, I have a mark, right?
There you go. I was looking.
Do I get to phone a friend if I need to?
Absolutely. So, and some of this is related to, Dr. McCabe, what you were saying about the North Carroll Middle bid exceeding the bid. Do we know what is primarily driving that? And, I mean, outside of getting additional funding from the state or locally, like, do we have any recourse for that?
Well, I mean, the basic premise from what the contractors are telling me is, it's very similar to the message that all of the HVAC and other trades are saying, is that things are still too expensive for them even also, whether it's their labor, their material, or their subcontractor pricing. So, we're seeing that across the board with all the trades. It hasn't really calmed down yet. The, so, and on the state side, yes, we did go back, and they've been very helpful with us getting additional funding that we could get. So, we transferred some money, realigned it, I should say, from other money that we can reapply for later. It was from the windows project at Westminster High, but it's not going to affect that project at all. So, it was older money, and so, they've agreed to help us out, and we're happy and thrilled for that. The, and it really lowered the county contribution to that $100,000 market, would have been much higher if the state did not help us out.
Okay. Okay, and that's not factored into, I mean, when a bid is made and we accept it, it's, so that inflation is factored in in some way? But it sounds like, is it over and above some threshold? That that's why it, okay.
Yes, you're exactly right, yes. And Mr. Kane escalates these projects when he starts with the budget and then continues it through the CIP process from the facility master plan on. He's escalating them every single year, sometimes 7% every single year. And so, yes, it is over and above.
Now, will that stress on the costs, will that be factored into the bids that we're looking at shortly for other HVAC systems?
Yes, yes. We're actually looking, and we're talking to our current bidders, and we're looking at other LEA bids that are going on now, so that we can address these escalations in those, and may have to readdress them towards the end of the future projects.
Yeah, I guess I'm just trying to understand whether we should be putting some sort of constraints in our contracts, or whatever, that say, you know, can only escalate past a certain amount. Like, is there any way that we can kind of control for that with future contracts?
Well, the only way really we could control it right now is get our bids out early, okay, which we are planning for the next round of HVACs. We're starting our design process now for next summer's possible projects, so we can try to beat the other counties. That does help sometimes, if you can get out there sooner. So, it's not the usual go-to bid somewhere around December, January. So, we are going to try to get our designs done faster and beat some of the other counties out there with their process. Seems like we're all trying to race each other.
Yes, Mr. Whistler.
Thank you so much, I appreciate it. I'm sorry, are you finished? Yeah. It's funny, I noticed.
I was going to follow up on that, but I'll, yeah, I'll.
You know, when I noticed the bids for, like, city roof for the two projects.
Right.
If you add them together, it really works out lower if you'd have chosen one vendor. Is there any thought to co-mingling bids, or, you know, rather than just doing it individually? Because if we had done, for example, North Carroll and Spring Garden together, it would have come in at a total of about, you know, $7 million.
Right.
Whereas, you know, individually, you know, it comes out at a low rate, but, you know, could, if we do an economy of scale, will we get a lower bid overall? I mean.
Yeah, sometimes we've done that. Sometimes we've done it. Most of the times, these roofers don't want two very large projects. We kind of figured that they might want both, since they're very close together, Spring Garden and North Carroll Middle, but they showed no interest in that. We had a lot of conversations before they went to bid about, you know, should we change the bid form? We would have done that, but they weren't really energetic about that, which kind of surprised me, so.
Yeah, it'd just be nice if we could think, but again, I appreciate your efforts.
Yeah, we've gone out of the box many times, whether we go to other consortium contracts, that's much more expensive. This has gotten us the best value so far with what we do, but I think our best bet is to try to get our designs done sooner and just beat the others out there.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Okay, Ms. Sevigny, you're back on, sorry.
Okay, no, no problem. So, this is just a related question, but I was looking at the Oklahoma Road Middle School HVAC replacement on the report, and it says that it's going to commence on April of '24, but it's not going to complete until January of '25. So, that's, part of that is during the school year? Is that a problem? Does that create any safety concerns? Or is, is that just kind of finished work that happens during the school year? Like, will the bulk of it happen over the summer?
Yes, yes. We'll have everything done in the summer, where we don't affect any classroom activities at all. That January '25 finish handles a couple of the long lead items. One is the generator, which now they're still over a year in lead time, and the other is the chillers. The chillers have a very long lead time. So, we're actually going to replace those chillers probably right when school starts, is when they're scheduled to arrive at this moment. And we'll do one at a time. So, we'll leave an old chiller, there's three there, and we're going to two. So, we're going to leave the chillers there functioning while we change them out to new. We'll be off to the back in the loading dock area, we won't bother any instruction or any activities back there. So, that's the, that's what's going to happen in the fall. All of the other heating and air conditioning systems will all be complete. This was originally scheduled to be a two-year job, and this contractor has found a way to want to finish it in one year, so we're real pleased about that. So, we're going for it.
Okay, gotcha. And Mount Airy looks like is a two-year job, right? Like, so there's not really going to be much going on during the school year, it's just the summer of '24 and the summer of '25?
Correct.
Is that right?
Yes, you're exactly right. More complications there, multiple floors. That contractor decided to keep that a two-year project.
Anything else?
I just wanted to ask the East Middle question, right? Is, do we have an estimated time of completion, and are we still on budget?
We're still on budget, and that's the good news also. We, and they haven't given us a finite date yet, but we're finishing up the walls now. They got one more section to connect between two walls, and they've actually started bringing the large pile of dirt over to the, I guess, where we had taken away the hill over by Longwell Avenue. We have, they've started bringing the dirt back, which is a good sign. So, they're starting to move it. We're still getting weekly storms, which slows us down on the dirt moving, but we're doing everything we can.
All right. Okay. Thank you, sir.
No problem.
And now, I need a motion for the approval of award of bids by Dr. Dorsey, and seconded by Ms. Pataglia.
Okay. There are five items on the award of bids. First is the roof replacement for North Carroll Middle. This and the second item are contracts for two roof replacement projects in our CIP for North Carroll Middle and Spring Garden. Bidding these projects at this point in the calendar allows us to order items with long lead times in advance of the summer work window. There is one error in the cover. The alternate number one for the North Carroll Middle School project is to install metal wall panels at the gables. Number two in our bid is the roof replacement for Spring Garden, as noted above. Number three is the refurbishment of the gym floor at Liberty High School. This would be a summer maintenance project, for which we will use state aging schools' program funds. Number four, we've got the Carroll County Government Financial Audit Services. This would be a piggyback on a county contract to establish a new contract with the audit firm for our required annual financial audit services. We've used this firm for many years, and I've been very satisfied with their work, as has the board's audit committee. And number five, sole source servicing of the elevator at Career and Tech. This is a sole source award to provide annual servicing to the elevator at our Career and Tech Center. And that's it.
All right. Any comments or questions? Ms. Sevigny? Take it away.
Thanks. Thanks, Ms. Herbert. I was just curious with the HVAC projects, so the City Roof Corporation, is that one that we've used in the past?
Hold on, he's coming.
Or is it?
Yes, we have. Yes. Great company. We've used them before, absolutely. They're a great roofing company.
Okay, great. Okay. And the other thing I was trying to understand is, when and how do we decide to accept an alternate bid? Right? Because we accepted Alt. 1 for the North Carroll HVAC, but we did not accept the Alt. 1 for Spring Garden.
We basically evaluate them as how important it is to the overall project. Now, the gable ends at North Carroll Middle are already having problems, you know, staying together, okay? These panels are not as thick, they're not as strong as metal. It's just more of an inferior product. So, they were, had more of a need to change those out. The alternate one that we chose for Spring Garden was additional sort of decorative metal panel areas, like around the bus canopy, also over doors and alcoves. That metal's in fine shape. Our only concern at the time was, maybe we matched the color, might be a little tough, but it wasn't necessary, or falling apart, or rusting. It's going to last for a long time. The other panels at Spring Garden were the blocking panels for the HVAC on the roof above the kitchen. So, again, they're in good shape, they'll last a long time still. That came out to what, I think it was $95,000 or whatever. We decided it wasn't worth it, and it sent us over our budget. So, that was the other decision maker for that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so, it's based on a combination of how badly it's needed, and like, the overall additional costs, and whether we still fall within budget or not?
Correct.
Okay, okay, great. Thank you. And then, the other question that I had was on the elevator, the Schindler elevator. Is that, so, this is that Career and Tech, right? So, is this, this is different from how it works for any of our other buildings, because it's a freight elevator at Career and Tech?
Yes, it's a freight elevator, yes. Yes, it's a freight elevator, and it's a different, but it's a unique company for our school system. So, we're, we are going to determine whether or not we want to include them in future bids, since they are sole source for, to cover their warranty and for inspections. So, we are going to consider that in the future.
Okay, so, this is the situation that we're in currently, because of how the Career and Tech contracts were done, but it will be a factor in future decisions?
Yes.
Okay, all right, great. Thank you. That's it for me, Ms. Herbert.
Okay. All right. I call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Thank you. It passes unanimously. Now, I need a motion for the approval of student appointments to the Carroll County Career and Technical Education Advisory Council by Ms. Pataglia, seconded by, by Dr. Dorsey.
Each year, we bring appointments for students to the Career and Tech Education Advisory Council. Each high school has a student representative on the council. Any questions?
No, but I know in the past, we have read the list of names, so, could we do that?
We could.
Just to acknowledge those students?
Yes.
And good luck.
Yes. I will try my best, Dr. Dorsey.
That's why I didn't offer.
This year, we have.
Smarter.
Hannah DeVincent, Walker Fabel, Braden Fritz, Jaden Kim, Brynlee Tozer, Dion Whitlow, and Paulina Zarekova. And I hope I pronounced that correctly. So, we're very proud of all of our students who will be representing us on the Career and Tech Education Advisory Council.
You did a good job. And remember, you make more money than I do, so.
All right. I call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? It passes unanimously. Now, I need a motion for the approval of transfer of school bus contracts by Ms. Pataglia, seconded by, by Mr. Whistler. There you go.
Periodically, we have contractors who wish to sell a bus contractor to another, a bus contract to another contractor. Once that transaction is agreed to, we then review and bring those for your approval. In this case, this contract award would be for a new contractor to join our contractor ranks. The new contractor has been a bus contractor in Howard County Schools for many years, and whose references there are very, very positive. I would note that this is the second new contractor we have added now in the past two years, and I take that as a positive sign for the work we are doing and the investment the board has made in the past several years to the transportation reimbursement formula. Any questions?
Comments? Then I call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It passes unanimously. Now, I need a motion for the approval of personnel appointments by Dr. Dorsey, seconded by, by Ms. Pataglia. Dr. McCabe?
Tonight, I have three recommendations for appointment. The first is Kelly Dolan, who is currently the school counselor at Pars Ridge Elementary, to acting assistant principal at Pars Ridge Elementary. Next, Christine Hill, from acting local accountability coordinator in curriculum and instruction, to the local accountability coordinator in curriculum and instruction. And thirdly, Jessica Schindler, from senior accountant in finance and accounting, to acting supervisor of finance in the area of finance and accounting.
Comments? Questions? And I will be abstaining. I call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
It doesn't pass unanimously, because I have to abstain.
But it passes.
But it does pass. And now, I need a motion for the approval of personnel action items by Ms. Pataglia, seconded by, by Mr. Whistler.
For the monthly personnel action items, there are three new hires and one promotion. And that's it for tonight.
Comments? Questions? I call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
It passes unanimously. At this time, I need a motion for the approval of champion officials group contract. So moved by Ms. Pataglia, and seconded by, by Mr. Whistler. Well, good evening, Mr. Duffy. We haven't seen you for a while.
I was a little disappointed, Ms. Herbert. You neglected to mention on February 16th, you attended the Carroll County Wrestling Tournament at Westminster High School.
I know.
I was a little taken aback, it hurt, I gotta say. But I'll get past it.
I don't do that anymore, because I'll never forget, because John Corona would make comments that we, everybody sees us in what we do, and Mr. Kyler yelled at me, because I was down on the floor with the coaches and the students where I was not supposed to be, but you took care of it, and I told him, go sit back up there. So, anyway, all right. So, we do a motion for this, right?
We do, yeah. Yeah, you got your first and your second.
All right. He just got me all excited. He hadn't been here for so long.
So, this is the annual contract for us to provide officials for all varsity and junior school. and junior varsity football games and scrimmages. Any questions for Mr. Duffy?
What's a, what's a varsity official get paid?
Uh, I believe it's around.
Because I'm gonna need a job in December.
It's around eighty, eighty-five dollars per game.
Ugh, okay, that's not enough.
It's not gonna do much for you. Um, this is actually, this is actually a, uh, four-year contract, um, to, um, so that we could, um, control costs over the time.
Yeah, and you could get hurt.
Well, certainly.
Yeah, right. So I, I.
I, I wouldn't want that for you.
Okay, all right.
Got a question.
Yes.
I know it's not related to this contract, but if you recall, we had, um, talked about considering, you know, do we have ample concussion protocol, folks, those folks that staff the sidelines at those games? Was there ever any thought put into, you know, whether or not funding would be appropriate for that to expand or enhance the, the presence?
We have our athletic trainers and we do have, uh, team physicians at almost every football game and we do have access to EMS at, at most, at all of our football games.
Okay, so you're satisfied, we're, we're good to go?
We think that we have it covered, yes, sir.
And I will tell you, those men and women were spot on at both, at both the count. I did go to the county wrestling tournament and I also went to JV. He went, I don't, I didn't know if you were there, were you there for that?
I was there, but I also had to, uh, run a state meeting.
Right, so yes. You missed my attendance there, but they, they are very busy and they're very good and I was, I've been in a lot of basketball games around the high school and, and they are spot on. They're doing a fantastic job. So, I call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Okay, it passes unanimously. Thank you, have a good evening. Good to see you. All right. And now, we are going on to consideration of textbooks and instructional materials, 2024, 2025.
So as a part of the annual process for consideration of textbooks and instructional materials, we bring you the materials being reviewed for your discussion. These materials are being vetted through the board's curriculum council and the Family Life Advisory Council as well. Instructional materials are also available for review by the public prior to final adoption. At the June meeting, we will bring recommendations for final approval after the review period concludes and both councils have voted. Mr. Shockney is here to answer any questions regarding the process or the materials.
Dr. Dorsey.
I would just like to say, as a representative on that committee, that we certainly, um, thank Mr. Wernick. He has built in, um, some extra community opportunities, um, for community members to preview the materials. And do you have those locations?
I do, I do, and Mr. Wernick gave me those, um, and, um, he does a great job of getting out and making sure that all the materials are accessible. And, uh, on Tuesday, April 23rd, um, the team will be at the Eldersburg branch, um, of the library. On Tuesday, April 25th, at the North Carroll branch, um, and then on Tuesday, April 30th, at the Tawny Town branch. And this, I'm reading right from a, from a, a release that went to all families. So all families, check your email, um, you'll have those, but please come out and take an opportunity to review, um, those materials and give us feedback.
And I think it's from five to six at each of those locations?
Yes, ma'am, from five o'clock to six o'clock PM at each of those Carroll County Public Library branches.
Okay, and again, as a part of our, um, reviewing of the materials, he's also built in some time for the committee to debrief. Um, in the past, if, if we had questions, we just noted them on a form and, you know, we may not have gotten any feedback, um, for, for those questions, but currently, the way that, um, he has the process built.
Yep.
Um, you know, we will have time for the whole council to address questions that are being raised about any of the materials.
Yes, ma'am. And in addition to those dates, uh, materials are also available by appointment only, though. We ask, uh, you know, citizens to reach out, make an appointment with us, um, during the hours of eight o'clock to three o'clock PM from March 11th through May 31st. So it's another opportunity and those materials will be here at that time, so citizens can make an appointment and come in and, and review then as well, also.
Ms. Pataglia.
I did have a quick question. Are you ahead?
I had noted that, um, on the back page here, under the family life curriculum, there's two books that they, uh, Family Life Advisory Committee voted to not approve.
Correct.
Is there, and it says that, no, we're not gonna see the results in the re, in the comments until June, but can you possibly give us any type of?
I can't speak to those off the top of my head, but, um, but all of the, so for, for all of our materials, we bring them as a whole now, and then in June, we'll bring it back to say, and, and as a whole, these are the books that made it through the process, these are the books that didn't make it through the process, and there'll be a why then. I know we, we always kind of summarize the comments and we also identify, you know, the, the votes and typically, whether it's curriculum council or in this instance, the, the Family Life Advisory Committee. So I don't, I don't have that off the top of my head, but we did wanna point out that this process is ongoing. The Family Life Advisory Committee has already given feedback on some of the instructional, um, materials, um, but curriculum council hasn't yet. So again, they'll be part of that process in its totality because we wanna be, you know, transparent of, here are all the books that were presented, here are the books that are moving forward, here are the books that are, or materials that are not moving forward.
All, all of these can be viewed, though, if someone wants to come here to view them upstairs and everything. Okay, I just wanna make sure. Yeah, because I was looking, I was like.
Yeah, and Ms. Pataglia, I might actually be able to give a little bit more, um, commentary around that, just because I, I was present at that meeting where the, the votes were taken. Um, so I think the, the comment here isn't quite accurate. It's, the, the Family Life Advisory Committee didn't vote to not approve the books, they voted not to recommend approval of the books, right? Like, the, the committee doesn't have the right to, to approve or, or disprove, but, but they voted to not recommend them to the Board of Ed. Um, we do have the, the tallies of those votes. Um, I, I believe they're covered in the minutes of the Family Life Advisory Committee from, from last month, so, um, we can get those to the board. We just want, we just wanted to try to follow the same process and timing of, of what was done for the curriculum council, for the, the rest of the materials.
Yeah, Ms. Sevigny, I'll, I'll update that footnote there to reflect that. They're recommended that not for approval, but I'll, I'll make sure with them, that we, we correct that and make that more accurate.
Thank you.
Okay, and the information that, um, we don't have concerning some of these, uh, materials is that, um, some of them are specific to one or two schools and, um, you know, one or two levels, so to speak. For example, I'm looking under, um, the English Language Arts for Middle School, um, seems like Mount Mary Middle polited, um, the first book, Chew on This. Um, it's a polit there, um, last year. Um, but again, it would be recommended, I guess, for, for the grade seven ELA, but then there's another one, um, like the Avengers over on the second page or on the back of this. Um, that's a part of an elective course. It's been at Century for years and, um, in Man Valley next spring. So we were given some different, uh, or some additional information as the supervisors were sharing, um, you know, feedback concerning the materials. I wanna know where these classes were when I was in high school. I'd love and to take film and literature.
I'm in school now, too.
Just for them, yeah.
Me, too.
Anything else?
But Ms. Herbert, could I, um, I was just curious about the, the movies. Um, is, are any of these rated R?
I, I can't imagine that they are because that would not be in alignment with our selection, adoption and evaluation of instructional materials. Because I think if, if my memory is correct, reciting the, we, we would only allow PG-13 movies with specific purpose and approval, um, but, um, but I'll double check that, uh, that, you know, the, the ratings of these, of these movies.
Okay, that, that, that would be helpful. I just, I remember, I, I remember Monty Python and the Holy Grail as being a little bit racy, maybe. From, uh, but may, maybe I'm misremembering it as a different movie, so.
Okay, we weren't given, uh, any of the ratings.
That was a few years ago.
Sure.
But I think, but I think, I mean, number two, if we number two, I think if it is a rated R, it, it depends upon, it teeters that level. So of course it's gonna be probably a 12th grade.
Sure.
If it is a rated R. And more than likely, there are edited versions that the school system can get that's like made for TV, per se.
And I would have to, I would have to defer to the, uh, to the instructional supervisor. I can, I can contact the group with some follow-up. I would imagine that, I don't know if these, these films may be used in their totality or portions of it for specific purposes, um, so I'd have to clarify that with the instructional supervisor.
Yeah, I don't wanna review movies.
Well, that's what our council will do.
That's right. I don't, I don't wanna review them.
And again, those are for the honors film and literature.
Okay.
I would love to get a review on.
My colleague's the last for saying PG.
Okay. Thank you. Solash, you could have texted me that, too.
Thank you. Thank you, appreciate that.
All right. Mr. Whistler? Okay. All right. And now, Mr. Whistler just surprised me with unfinished business.
Again, nothing that we need to take action on, but I just wanted to make sure that everyone was aware, um, but one of the May legislative meetings, um, I learned that , uh, another county has, uh, created an AI policy, which I thought was pretty interesting. It was one of the first AI policies created in the state, so just wanted to let staff know that.
We, we have some, uh, received some preliminary guidance. Mr. Wernick has a team of folks who've put together some preliminary pieces, um, and he presented the other evening, was it?
It was at the Curriculum Council.
The PAC meeting?
Just to start to kind of put some things together, gather some feedback, um, and at some point in time, you know, we can obviously bring that, um, as we fine tune that and what that's going to look like, um, bring that, uh, to you all as part of a, a future presentation.
I appreciate that.
Very interesting.
Yeah.
And again, it's, it's generative. I mean, it keeps, keeps changing. I mean, you know, on a, almost a, a daily basis, it seems like. But just very interesting. And again, I did ask specifically, um, concerning board members, um, receiving that information and we are one of the stakeholders.
Yeah, we're still in the building process of kind of collecting some information, um, on, uh, on that. We've got some, some recent guidance that's come out, so putting all those pieces of the puzzle together and, um, in the near future, we can put all that together and bring you, bring you a little proposal.
It is nice, yeah, and, um, I'm sorry.
No, I was gonna say, if you wanted a sneak preview, we do have a, a curriculum council site where you can go on and look at the presentations.
Yeah, the discussion at the May meeting was, um, legislative meeting, there's, uh, we're thinking the legislature's gonna start taking up AI legislation next session, not this session, obviously, but, um, it's just nice to get ahead of it and to kind of get our teeth into it before, so that we can recommend early on in the legislative session how we'd like to see them craft legislation, or more importantly, not craft legislation.
Sure.
Sounds like our group is on it, and again, it's mainly the middle and high school levels that it pertains to.
But that, that's it, thank you.
Okay. Anything else?
I got.
Okay, go ahead, Ms. Pataglia.
Um, so real quick, I, I just wanna, you know, with the warmer weather coming, I think we need to make sure that our administrators are enforcing the dress codes we have, um, that are in the student handbook. I think we need to make sure we are getting those, following them, or we're doing what needs to be done. And is there a way we could possibly discuss, um, adding certain water bottles and metal containers to the dress code? If you wanna show yours, because yours is nice and big and that's a nice little weapon to smack up beside a teacher's head or a student's head, and that's what we're, we're starting to see that's happening. Now there are kids who are using them as weapons, so. If we, if we need to look into something, just making sure all our containers are plastic, I think that's something that's beneficial.
Yeah, that's something that we can, um, that we can add to, um, to a board discussion at an upcoming meeting.
Right.
Okay. And, yes.
On the topic of AI, um, I, I do, we should also talk about how, um, there are detectors on certain apps. We know about Turnitin, that's had, that recently implemented a AI detector, but we have seen instances in which the AI detector has been inaccurate, as in you can look at the Google Doc history of a student, watching it entirely be created, and still it's considered AI, because no matter what, things can be caught through the slips. We also, I believe that we need to, when we're doing this, when we're working with AI and making a policy on this, we also talk about not being accusatory, only, only enforcing it if you catch a student using it, or only enforce a student if you have direct proof. In fact, like, a teacher should not be accusing students of using AI when there is no proof that they did. Maybe we can see, oh, this doesn't look like their normal work, so we can say it might be cheating, but if we're implementing a policy on regulating AI specifically, we need to make sure that we're not accusatory, because there could be a student that is just very prolific in writing or has a specific way of writing, and we can't shout out claims, we can't have teachers, um, punishing students for things that we have no proof that they did, which is where the finickiness of AI comes from, because we don't know and we might not always know. But I do believe that's something we need to look into to make sure that students aren't getting punished for things that either they didn't do or there's no proof that they did.
Yeah, and I think that's a part of, of what they are looking at, and, um, again, you know, the, the neat thing about, um, students' written work, I mean, usually, teachers can pick up the student voice in the student's writing. So if a student would turn in, let's say, a piece of work that certainly doesn't sound like the student, doesn't have that student voice, and I forget the name, I don't know whether that's the Turnitin or there is a, a special program that can be used, um, that would, um, sort of say how much of the actual writing might be questionable. Um, and at that, you know, my understanding was that then the student would have a chance to certainly redo and make sure he's doing it in his or her own voice. But it's so interesting, all this that's out there now.
It is, and it's truly, even if we see a student's voice, it's also subjective at times, and that can be difficult for teachers and students to navigate, because, I don't know about you, but sometimes one essay I write is completely different from another and that's not on purpose, it just tends to happen as one writes. ChatGPT can also be used outside of a writing purpose, it can be used for, um, math, I know. It can be used for, um, everything, basically, and it's incredibly hard to regulate as a school system when laws in this, in the national government haven't even been created for it yet.
Yeah.
So it's hard to navigate.
Yeah, and it's too bad Mr. Wernick isn't here, because I know he would certainly be able to respond, um, to some of these items.
He is way more of an expert than, than I, and I think, you know, obviously, you know, you know, there are times where AI has its merits, other times where it does not. What is the smart balance? You know, how do we, you know, teach the responsible use thereof? All those other pieces need to be, um, you know, need to be factored in, but I understand completely your concern of, obviously, if we, you know, if we have a, a cause for concern, there needs to be evidence behind that. That makes perfect sense.
Yeah, well, I know one of the initial things that we were asked to do was to think of the times that, um, we are using AI. And, um, you know, some of us were sitting there thinking, well, if we're using it, we don't know that we're using it. Um, but then as the discussion, um, took place, there are plenty of evidences of, of AI being in use. And I won't say anymore about that because we might be put to that same task a little bit later, so I wanted to be a surprise to you.
All right. Okay. All right. Well, I'm gonna say one thing, too, and I normally don't, but, you know, everything is relative, and on Friday, I will be attending a viewing of a wonderful child. He was a man that passed away from North Carroll High School, 29 years old. A wonderful example of what you want your child to end up being, and a very avid golfer. So he has left a wife and a baby. So tonight, when you all go home, think of your family. Kiss your kids, kiss your wife, kiss your partner, but everything is relative compared to what we've talked to tonight. We've talked about bullying, use of cell phones, but there's nothing better than a family. And, uh, he's really brought things back to me because you just don't expect that from a 29-year-old person that had, was full of life. But I just want you all to think of what really we're all about and it's, and what's important. And family is so important. And we've had some tough months lately with these, all these sidebars, but, um, but we can't forget our families. So I just wanted to say that tonight. So we've got a lot going on here. Monday, March 18th, we have a board work session here, right here in this room, on student behavior. And it's been stated that about five or six times tonight. So we encourage everyone that can come, please come. Uh, it'll be televised, so please come. On Monday, March 25th, the superintendent will have another town hall on the Maryland Blueprint, and it will be at the Carroll County Career and Tech Center in the cafeteria. And if you haven't seen that beautiful building, please do so. On Wednesday, April 10th, we have a Board of Education, um, no, we have a board, we have a meeting with the county commissioners. And that is at one, and then followed by that, uh, at five o'clock, we will have a board meeting here with public participation in the boardroom. Do I have a motion to adjourn? By Ms. Pataglia and seconded by? By Dr. Dorsey. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Thank you, Donna. And it passes unanimously. Have a safe trip, Ms. Sevigny.